Again, Dr. Bill Miller of the Hood County Pastor Council has brought with us to us today, Pastor Tim Petty, no relation to Tom Petty or Richard Petty. He pointed that out to me, of the Cross and Place Church here in Granbury, Texas. It's going to give us the invocation this morning. Welcome Pastor Petty.
Thank you. Could you bow with me? Father, we just are so thankful today that you are a God of grace and we just ask that your grace and mercy would be with us today in these session. And Lord, I just pray for wisdom. Lord, I pray for understanding. Lord, I pray that you would just help us to take on your character. And Lord, listen and hear before we seek to be heard. Lord, I pray for these commissioners and all the county staff today, that your blessing and your provisions be for them and their families as they have served and volunteer themselves for this county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all join me at place of allegiance, this great nation. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which the saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas side, I believe that we can see the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Pastor Petty and for that wonderful invocation. And thank you again, Dr. Miller, to bring such inspiring speakers every commissioners' court. Okay. We have no special presentations today? Oh, okay. All right. I've got one citizens' participation form filled out here, Mr. Steve Biggers. And again, I recognize that everybody here in the audience, if you wish to speak about any agenda item, that you can fill out a participation form and give it to the sheriff and the sheriff will give it to Ms. Katie Lang and she will give it to us and we will let you speak at the appointed time. Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to question or pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Yes Judge, I'd like to pull one item off of the consent agenda. Under item D auditor, line item transfers, item 1A1, Constable Precinct 2, $1,500 moving from increasing small equipment to decreasing supplies for purchase of desk and office furniture. I'd like to, I'd like to talk about that issue and better understand it.
Is Constable Shirley, you want, is that, that's his precinct too? Do you want to explain to us why you need to purchase some office equipment?
Yes, good morning. Go ahead Commissioner.
You want to explain to us why you-
Yes sir, yes sir. In my office located at the old courthouse, all I have is a conference table up there and I've made do with what I could for four to five months now. I would move the furniture that I had at the Justice Center, but I don't believe we can move it up to the third floor of the courthouse. So any other options would be welcome.
Jay, do you, can you speak on that at all? I'm not a furniture mover. Have you seen the furniture that's down in the Justice Center? I know there is a bunch of furniture down there. There's desks and-
The, my, I can't move the desks upstairs. There's no way. The desks are heavy and I'm one person, even with multiple people on this, on this small staircase.
Can't they take them apart? I mean those desks come-
I have, I have no knowledge of that at all.
Let me ask something. Could you, you know, if Jay and him couldn't move his, you know, it seems like it might be cheaper to hire a professional mover to take them up to the third floor.
I would absolutely be welcome with that.
Why don't we do that? Do you mind us taking a look at it? Maybe-
By all means. If it can be moved up there, absolutely.
Okay, you'd be willing to use your own-
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
My concern was the fact that it's so large it wouldn't be able to be moved and basically something would have to be assembled in place in order to be able to be moved up there.
Yeah, I'm not a furniture mover either, but maybe we ought to have somebody look at it-
Absolutely.
And get by cheaper than, because then we're going to have furniture up there, $1,500 worth. We still got furniture down there in the old office that's not being used, so.
I'm all for it. If it can be moved, absolutely have it be moved.
Okay. Why don't we do that then?
Thank you.
So are we going to just table this?
We just table this and we'll get with, we'll get with maintenance and see if they can do it. If they can't, we'll maybe hire it out to have somebody disassemble it and reassemble it.
Okay. Good. Just do that then.
With, other than that issue Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the item that we just talked about.
Okay, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion had made in second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of line item D1A. And we're going to allow the, Mr. Jay Riley and his department to look at it and see if we can move the equipment rather than purchase additional equipment. So all those in favor of this motion, second made by Commissioner Cotton?
No. Oh, we're- Cotton, motion Dever second.
Yeah. Made by you Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. That brings us down to, Mr. Lenny is here, but Mr. Lenny, you don't have anything on the road operations?
Not this meeting, that's it.
But we're glad to see you. I thought something was happened to you. Okay. That brings us up to development, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning Judge, morning Commissioners. We have accepted an application for replat and complantation, Unit 8, lots 805R1 and 807R1 in Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for July 14, 2020.
Okay. Court would entertain a motion to set a-
Yes. I'll make that motion for, to set a public hearing for complantation, Unit 8, lots 805R1 and 807R1 in Precinct 2 for July 14.
Second?
Second.
Second. Motion had been made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner White, to set a date for public hearing for July 14, 2020 on the subject property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. For this court, you've all received advanced copies of invoices that we need to pay. You've also received a spreadsheet regarding payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding any invoices that are presented for this court? The court packets total $520,384.42 and the auditor's office recommends payment.
I'd like to make a motion Judge, to consider payments of invoices for the period May 21, 2020 through June 3, 2020, and vendors over $10,000. We've looked at this and didn't see no issues. I'd like to make that motion.
A motion made by Commissioner Dever to consider payment of the invoice of a period of May 21, 2020 through June 3, 2020, and discuss vendor payment over $10,000 to take appropriate action. I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you Ms. Kidd.
Thank you all.
Okay. That brings us to miscellaneous, item number one, considering and take action on Nationwide guaranteed minimum interest rate of fixed annuity contract for Hood County participants. Ms. Melissa Welber.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. Back in July of 2019, Nationwide sent us three options to choose from. Because we are considered the court, Hood County, the plan sponsor, it is up to us to pick which option we want to go with moving forward. So in July, option three was chosen and I'm not sure that was the best option for overall county participants. And this plan is offered to our employees strictly optional. It is considered an optional retirement plan. So I've asked Crystal Roseman to attend today. She's from Nationwide and I think she can better explain the options that we have to pick from and then after the court decides, we'll move forward on picking those options for our county plan. Crystal?
To inform people out at the court and the court members Nationwide, this is not a county funded retirement. It's a voluntary retirement for the employees outside the county retirement. So, thank you Crystal.
Thank you. Good morning Court. My name is Crystal Roseman. I am your Nationwide representative for the 457 program. And as he stated, this is a voluntary program that allows for the employees to put away additional funds tax deferred. So the issue is in regards to the fixed account, which is one of the investment funds that they are able to invest in. It is the only account that had a guaranteed minimum to it, so this is going to be for people who want to shelter it from the market and have it in more of a safer account. Nationwide has had to make changes to that fixed account because as we know, interest rates have not been great for years and we've been paying out a guaranteed 3.5% for many, many years. But we've had to make changes to that going forward because that is not sustainable. So we had given the county three different options of being able to, how they wanted to make those changes. The first option, there's option one, option two, and option three. Option three is the defaulted option, which is what happened. It automatically went to option three, which means that it freezes everyone who is in that account currently, but anyone going forward would not be able to participate in that account. So that is what option the county is currently in that it's been changed to. However, we want to make sure that the county is aware of the other two options to review to see if they need to make a change to option one or option two. So option one allows for the plan to go down on a stair step basis and basically it's going to have the interest rate gradually decline over the next four years. So that it is going to decline from 3.5% to 2.5%, to 2%, to 1%. So the guaranteed minimum is 1%. Keeping in mind that the minimum of the guarantee just means that we cannot pay any less than that amount, but that does not mean that that is the amount that we are actually crediting in that account. So when we credit, we credit based on what we're able to credit, meaning if we are able to get the better rates and we're able to credit even if the floor, say for example for this year, the floor is 2.5%. If we're still able to credit 3.2%, we're still going to credit that to the account, but we would not be able to credit lower than the 2.5% that it would be for this year. So with this option, it allows for us to still have room to be able to pay more if we're in a position to do so, but it stair steps down the guaranteed minimum to that guaranteed 1%, which is the, the minimum requirement over the next four years. So with this option, it's going to allow everybody to still participate in the fixed account, so new and old, whoever wants to still participate in the account, they're able to, but they'll get a gradual decline in what that guaranteed rate will be. Again, the amount that's credited to the account is going to fluctuate from quarter to quarter based on what we're able to pay out.
Let me ask a question right there on this option one. Are y'all going by the Fed's rate or y'all say the Fed rate is 3%? Y'all going to stay at 3%?
No. So our rate is based on, so the way the fixed account works, just to give you some background and, and any guaranteed account is going to work is that the money that is actually put into the guaranteed account is never invested. So it's held in a sacred, a separate account. And what happens is it frees up Nationwide's money to be invested in long-term investments. So what we invest in is long-term bonds, typically 20 and 30-year bonds. So as these bonds renew, and of course the rates are much lower, then that's going to recalibrate what our payout option is going to be for that quarter. So that's what's, that's what it's based on. It's based on the rates that we're able to get from our investments and we use those earnings from those investments to be able to pay out the rate on the fixed account.
So say 2023, it's got 0.5%. That's, that's the lowest it can go, right? On this chart here?
Yes, so-
But if the rates are still good, they could still be 3, 2 or 3%, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Yep, the guaranteed minimum just means the absolute floor that we cannot pay below.
Okay.
But what happens is that when you have a guarantee, you have to have a certain amount in reserves in order to pay that. And with us having to renew at much lower rates, we need to release some of those reserves to invest more to be able to pay out the higher rates. So that is the, the synopsis behind the rate changes. So it doesn't go according to Fed rates and that's why it's recalculated constantly throughout the year and every quarter, that rate would be adjusted based on what we're able to get.
Way I was reading this, and I'm not no financial genius, I was reading it, well in 2023, it's going to be 5%. But that's not necessarily true unless the rates go down.
That's correct. That would just be the floor. So that's the bare minimum that we would have to pay no matter what.
Okay.
But we would be, we strive to pay much higher. Even this year, we're still paying in the 3% range.
Sure.
So for plans who have opted for option one.
Way I was reading it, it's going to start going down no matter what.
No, so the floor is definitely going down. So the bare minimum that we can pay, the floor is going down, but the actual crediting rate, what we're actually paying on that account has not. Mm-hmm. So that is option one. And then option two is a deviant of option one and what it does is because of the fixed account, having that guaranteed minimum, it restricts people from being able to move all of their money out at once. So, and this has always been the case with the guaranteed fund, is that you can only move up to 20% out of the fund every year. So if you have, you know, all of your money in the account, for example, and you have $100,000 in the fixed account, the maximum you could move out of the fixed account at one point in time would be $20,000.
While you're employed, right?
Yes. Well, that's for moving it into another investment. So that's a good point. So whether you're employed or not does not matter, but as far as moving it to another investment, it restricts it to 20%. But in your example, when you are actually not employed with the county, you want to withdraw it, there's no requirements for withdrawals. You can withdraw the whole $100,000 if you needed to.
Okay.
So with option one, it keeps with that same crediting, the same annual rate that you can move out as 20%. Option two gives a slightly less crediting rate, so it's a 0.1% less, so it's 10% less basically of the crediting rate in exchange for a higher transfer out amount. So in option two, you double the amount you can transfer out per year. It's 40% that you can transfer out per year instead of the normal 20%. This option is not very common, but it's for anybody who thinks that because of the change in the rate, that people want to move their money out of the account quicker. So in exchange for that, you get a slightly less crediting rate for the option to be able to move the money out of that fixed account quicker. We have not seen this be a popular option because most people who are in the fixed account are not looking to move out into the market. So this is not a major concern, but it is an option for you as well. And then, like I said, with option three, which is the current option, this is basically walling off everybody, freezing everybody who's already in that 3.5% account. So they will continue to get the 3.5%, but the fund will not be available for any new contribution. So no one will be able to put any additional funds into that account. So that means whether they are still employed here or they are retired here, they would not be able, anybody would not be able to move any additional money into that fixed account. So what's there is there and that's frozen at the 3.5%, but you would not be able to move any additional money or add any additional money. So the people who are contributing still, their money is going to be diverted into a different fund going forward.
What about new employees?
That's the same thing for new employees. They do not even have that option. Uh-uh.
They're out.
Right. It's completely frozen and walled off.
How many employees in Hood County are in this Nationwide, Melissa?
I'm not sure the number that participate Nationwide, but we have approximately 46 that participate in this particular plan that Crystal's talking about, the fixed rate.
Our plan is option three, what, right now?
Currently, yes.
But option three will not allow new employees to get into the program.
Correct. Or even those who are currently participating, you will no longer be able to contribute to that current plan that you have.
Option three would be good for me, but I got to think about the other employees.
And that's why option three was available, because if you are considering the people who are already in it, that's the best decision for them, but for anyone going forward or still contributing and wants to contribute into it, they no longer have that option.
So, you know, option three would be good for the people fixing to retire.
Right. That is correct.
But option one and two is for new employees or employees that are already in.
Mm-hmm.
It's, guys, I'm going to need y'all's expertise on this because-
Option two seems to have, give you more flexibility to move money around, right?
Right. For those who want to move out. But like I said, the reason why we haven't seen that option be as popular is because most people who are in that fund, they're in that fund for a reason. They want the safety. So they're not going to typically want to move out into a more aggressive style fund. So we don't see that happen very often where they are asking to move money out of there. But it is the most flexible for that reason.
Option two would be the same scale as option one, but you got more flexibility with moving money, right?
Yes, but you get credited a little bit less than in option one.
Hmm.
So like if we're crediting 3.2 in option one, you're going to get credited 3.1%.
After you're in this, what do you, what do you see?
Confusing. It's hard to discern between the two. Like you, option three would have been the best for-
Yeah, I can't even, I can't even go there, so.
Either one of these would probably lean toward option one.
What do you think Nationwide lady?
Well, and that's, that's the reason why we opened it to having the different options because in that very same scenario with option three, it is going to be the best for the people who are in it, who already know about it, who are already enjoying the 3.5% and, but it is not in the best interest of new people coming into it, new people who are wanting to be able to contribute into a safer investment and not have to be in the market. So there are other investments that are not completely aggressive. So we do have like money market accounts and things of that nature. So they do still have other options, but the difference is the fixed account was the only one that had a fixed rate. So with like a money market account, for example, it does not have the risk factor because it's still a safe account, but you may not make any money in that account. And so with that being said, that kind of defeats the purpose of having your money invested is because you're not going to really make a lot of money. Now, of course, when rates go back up, money markets could pay more than that 3%. We haven't seen that in years, so that's not something that we promote or, or, you know, are saying is going to happen. But they do have other options, but it's not going to be the same. It's not going to be the rate that the fixed account was paying and it's not going to give the guarantee either.
I've been in it for about 25 years and when I first got into it, I think the interest rate was 5%.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's when you could get that in a savings account as well. So, yes, so-
You're showing your age.
Yeah. I'll tell you.
I have a question. Melissa, how many people sign up? How many on average new employees sign up for this? I would say approximately 10 a year maybe. I think a lot depends on when Crystal's able to come and meet with our employees. And of course, this year, we were not able to bring her here in spring. This year, we have not had anyone sign up, but we have pretty good participation.
We do. And the other part of that, to your question, when, when I meet with participants to get them enrolled into the plan, I don't direct them to the fixed account, just for FYI, only because fixed account is great for its own purposes, but it's not meant as a long-term investing tool. So if they're just starting out in the account, I'm going to direct them more towards the market where they'll get a higher payout over a long period of time. So the fixed account is one of those things where we kind of see it as a good and a bad thing because it's a good thing that we were able to pay out such a high rate and people love that rate, but also it was a bad thing for people to, who are having, you know, 10, 20, 30 years to retire and they were getting into that fixed account because even with the rate being as high as it was, you're combating inflation. And inflation over the years can be 2% to 3% by itself, which eats away at that profit. So when I meet with people, I don't necessarily direct them to the fixed account. I will explain what it is so they know and they have that option. And some of them will default to that because they don't want to make a decision otherwise, but we have other investments that we do encourage them to take a look at and be able to participate in as well. So it's not something that we like to have new employees invest in, but some of them like that just for that safety. They don't want to take any risk.
How often does Nationwide change their plan? Like Commissioner Dever here, who always has the best interest of the county and not his personal best interest. He had 5%, but yet y'all have changed it now down to 3%, right?
Yes, 3.5%.
And how are you going to change it? Again, if the rates ever go up, y'all going to come back to us with the plan to say, hey, you can make more money?
Of course. This is why the plan allows for us to pay out a higher crediting rate because if we're able to get that higher rate, then we are going to pay that out because this is part of Nationwide's reputation. We've had this account for years. And if you really consider, if he's been in it over 20 years and we've only changed it twice, that lets you know how often we're actually making these changes. And we're only doing this now. We're actually behind the eight ball. Most companies made this change five years ago because they knew rates have not been high enough, but we have been able to sustain that because of our long-term commitments in our accounts. But as they come doing, it's not feasible, then we have to make that change.
No, it's, it's been good. It's, it's, it's a high rate to what? If you've got a savings account, you know, savings account, what, 0.5%? Not even 1%? And they have been gracious on their interest and, and I've been waiting for this to happen because I know interest rates have gone down and y'all stayed there.
For years, exactly. We stayed, we stayed above the, when everybody changed over five years ago, we sustained the same rate and we've been paying it ever since. And like I said, we, we pushed it out as long as we possibly could before having to make this change because we know how much people love the fixed account. So we, we pride ourselves on being able to pay as high as we can. And so that's what we still strive to do, even with making this change.
Well, Ms. Audra sent you. Which do you recommend then? Plan one or plan two?
Okay, Melissa, you said 46 people are in the fixed rate right now. That is correct. You don't have a number of, how many employees are part of this plan or- I don't know. And they have a better number, she's in the actually- You mean one that does- The deductions. Yeah. Between 30 and 40, between 30 and 50 people are actually in it. So a large number of employees participate in the fixed- And you don't always have to sell open? No, they can do this at any time. So that, what, my point was how many do we have in the plan and how many are in this fixed rate? If there's like 10 that aren't, then the best plan would maybe be option three. I don't know. What do you think Ms. Crystal?
I don't recall the, the percentage of, of those people who are contributing that are actually still in the fixed account. So that number, I think me and Melissa discussed it a couple of months ago, but-
46.
Okay, of the old-
Pay in the fixed.
Okay. So then there's a majority of the people who are participating actively in the plan that are in that fixed account.
Go to option three, no new employees can get in.
That's correct.
You're shutting the door on new employees.
That's correct.
And that's the kicker.
Yes. And, well, not even just new employees, for those employees who are contributing as well, they can no longer add any additional funds to that-
They're locked in too.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, Judge, I'm going to make a motion and it's not going to hurt my feelings any if the people don't like it. I don't like trying to make decisions for, for a savings account for 30 or 40 people, but I'm going to say I'd like to make a motion to go with option one.
Motion had been made by Commissioner Dever to go with option one with Nationwide regarding the savings plan for the county employees. I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
That motion costs me a lot of money. That motion costs- That motion cost me a lot of money. That motion cost me a lot of money.
I know, but see, you always put county first. That's what I like about you. Okay. All right. Okay. This brings us, are you still with us?
Yes.
Item number two.
I have the next topic as well.
Consider and take appropriate action on Nationwide implementation of the CARES Act provisions.
Yes. So the CARES Act, this is an act that was implemented by the government, and so this is not Nationwide's doing. But this was implemented by the government when the pandemic hit. And what it does is it gives each plan the option of adopting this CARES Act or not. So what the CARES Act does is it actually allows for people to take coronavirus-related distributions from their plan while they're still employed. Typically, as a current employee, you can only take money if you're borrowing against it and you're paying that money back into the account. Or the other option is if you can, if you're taking a hardship withdrawal, which you had to give certification for, you had to give the documentation to show what the reason was, and it had to be approved. With the coronavirus-related distributions, it is self-certified. So that means that the employee is saying, I am affected by the coronavirus, I need to take out a distribution for that reason. Now, there's good and there's bad to this. The good thing is that if you do adopt it, they will be able to take out withdrawals for, if they need it. The bad part of this is that there will be some people who abuse it and take it out just because they can, because it has been on the news, but this is not something that Nationwide would promote, and we would just tell people or volunteer that information. But for, I know for your employees, I know most of them have still been at work and they have not been affected in that manner. But even for people who are still employed, their spouses may not be employed, so they may still be affected one way or another by the coronavirus pandemic. So this allows for them to take out a withdrawal if they hit some type of situation. Now, again, it is self-certified, which means that they specify that they are affected, they do not have to provide documentation, and they are taking the money out of the account. They are not having to pay it back. They will have to pay taxes on that eventually. The, that hurts their plan in the long run, just to be truthful about it, because of course, when you take money out of the plan, it's not there to earn for you and grow for you while you are working. And the whole point of this plan is to have money set aside once they retire from the county. But having that option there in case employees do call in and ask about it because they've heard it on the news, they're gonna know, that's gonna be the only way that they're being made available of this information unless the county proactively sends something out. Because again, we're not promoting it because we're not trying to have people take money out unless they absolutely have to. But what happens is if people hit a financial hardship, their retirement account is probably their largest amount of money that they have set aside. And of course, they cannot access TCDRS funds, so their Nationwide 457 would be the first place they would go if they don't have additional savings set up. So in that regard, this will allow for them to take out up to $100,000 anytime this year until December 30, 31st of this year. They would be able to self-certify, and they will not have a penalty for withdrawing. So they would pay the taxes, the taxes would be due for that money, but that would be basically the only thing they're paying for taking out that withdrawal. The second part of the CARES Act is the enhanced loans. So currently, like I said, normally they are able to take out loans from the account or hardship withdrawals. With a loan, you're able to borrow up to half of your account balance, up to $50,000. But the enhanced loans allow for them to borrow up to $100,000 from their account. So it just increases their amount that they can take out for that loan. With a loan, when they borrow from the account, it does come out of the account and they are paying it back into their account. So instead of the market paying them interest, they're paying their own interest back into their account. It is a better option than having to go to a bank instead of being your own bank, but it is something that of course, we don't want anybody to abuse and use unnecessarily. But that is the second provision of the CARES Act that it allows as well. So the county can decide to either enact the CARES Act. You have, you can select one or both of those provisions, or you can elect not to enact the CARES Act. And what that means is just that it will not apply to the employees. So the only time the employees would know that this is or is not available is if they call in and ask about it.
Well, we've been fortunate here at Hood County, like you said, that we have continued to pay all of our county employees through the COVID situation here. So hopefully, the purpose of this is to ensure people will have a decent retirement to supplement their social security or whatever they have. So hopefully, like you say, they don't pull out the money and able to get through this time, but we shouldn't have it here. But like you did point out, there may be the second wage earner in the family that may work someplace else that has been laid off, that doesn't have the second income and may need to borrow some money. So, but it's always been a good option for people that are applying to the county, knowing that we have such a good retirement system that's here, that's an added benefit to people that are applying for here. You agree with that, Ms. Welborn? So... I don't know. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I got a question. Is this a individual or does the county have to opt in or out for the whole county?
That's correct. The county has to opt in or out for the whole county.
But if the, but if we do, then that just gives the employee the right to do whatever he wants.
That's correct. Exactly. So it's, it'll be the employee's decision.
You're just giving your freedom. You're still on your own to decide whether or not you're gonna take it out if the county opts in for this.
That's correct.
But doesn't require the employee to do anything with it?
Correct. And like I said, we won't, we don't even proactively give the information out, but if they ask for it, that's when we would, we'd be able to look it up and see if the plan has elected it or not.
Past, in the past and in the future, Nationwide, you cannot just take money out. You have to have a catastrophic reason, am I correct?
Correct, for the hardship.
What we're calling catastrophic reason to pull money out.
Correct.
I just don't see the county restricting the employees to do what they want with their account. They want to do it, that's up to the individual, isn't that right?
If we, if we pass it?
But you know, this, this shows till December 31st of 2020, and then this loan is till September 23rd of 2020?
Yes, 'cause when they take out a loan, it's a minimum five year, like they have a five-year repayment term. So they would be taking out the loan until 2023 or, or beyond. So basically, they have the option of using this and taking out the loan, and then they specify if they wanted to be a one-year loan, a two-year loan, a five-year loan, but they have that time period where they can set that loan up.
Well, I'll make the motion to implement the CARES Act provisions for Nationwide retirement system.
A motion been made by Commissioner Dever to implement the provisions of the CARES Act for the county employees. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. You don't have anything else for us?
No, I think that is all for today.
Come back, we have some real good news, will ya?
I'll try, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
All right. This brings us to item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the Hood County relocation and reconstruction of county offices policy. Ms. Welborn?
Yes. You should have all received the revisions that are be, being recommended today. The ones that, the items that are, the wording that's being inserted is highlighted in yellow, and the wording being removed is in red. I'll be happy to go over the revisions with you or answer any questions you may have.
Judge, I put this on here and asked Melissa to look at it and talk to Maintenance, Jay and, and Auditor Anne. This affects Maintenance, Auditor, and Purchasing. And this has always been in, in effect, and a lot of people don't know this. And I hope if the court passes this or don't pass it, every elected point official will get this somehow, where they know. Some people think they can talk to one commissioner and get their, get the room renovated, or, or so on, so on. But this has been in the policy for so many years, and it, it's putting a burden on Jay and the Auditor and Purchasing to, to say you want to knock out a wall in a building. Some people think they can talk to one commissioner. No, you have to bring it to court. And a lot of things happen where you don't know what's gonna happen, and it may come up and you don't budget. So what, what we're asking is if you're gonna do a major renovation in your office, budget it for the budget year. And I know sometimes you can't do that, but, and, you know, if you're paying for it out of your own pocket, it still has to come to court for permission to do it. And that's, that, this is just kind of a reminder for everybody, and we kinda added some things in there. Wasn't, wasn't a major add, but it's just things that we kinda cleaned it up a little bit. But just wanted to make all the elected point officials aware, if you're gonna lay carpet in your office, come to the court. Make sure we're okay with it. Make sure you got funding for it. Make sure you got the RFEs or POs or whatever. Make sure there's money in, in your budget to do it. If you didn't budget for it, people are wearing Jay out. They come to Jay and say, hey, I want this. Well, it's not budgeted, so it has to take out of, out of his pocket, so he runs short of money. So it's just kinda cleaning this thing up and making all the elected officials and point officials aware of our policy that's been in effect.
You know, I echo what, what Commissioner Dever said, you know, as far as I understand, the commissioners quarter over all the buildings, you know. You know, we need to be made aware of what's being done to, to the buildings, you know, and just, alls we're asking, just bring it to court.
Have your ducks in a row. Right, Auditor and Person and Maintenance.
We're just having a discussion. What we've tried to do in the past is when we have budget hearings and you need something, want something in your office, we put it in Jay's budget. That way, it's unique, and Jay will have a list of projects coming up, he can plan this. If you put it in his budget, then they maybe, and they, they forget that they can spend it on something else. But construction or things of that nature should be in Jay's budget.
Yes, I agree.
Not individuals, but it makes it easier on everybody.
But that way, Jay could put it in his budget.
Exactly.
And it's, and I understand things come up that we don't think about, that, you know, halfway through the budget year, we need to do this or that. But if he can, you know, budget for this thing and not get into his budget, that stuff that's not budgeted, that ruins his budget. Yes. So it's just kind of a wake-up call for everybody to realize that we do have this policy in effect. And talking to one commissioner doesn't get it done, bring it to court. Jay will do the homework on it, see what it costs, bring it to court, and, and we'll, we'll vote on it. Person?
And something, a lot of 155-type items come to court anymore that I know nothing about. And while they may have a contract number on their paperwork, they're, they have to do their due diligence if they're using a cooperative. They need to go in and look at that contract, even though the vendor might be saying, yeah, we're covered under that contract. You can't trust them. You have to go in and look at it. Make sure it's gonna meet your needs because that is what we are bound by.
Yeah. Make sure our county attorney looks at the contracts, too.
Uh, these are all things that have been, already been out, and that's why they're on a cooperative. But each individual that brings this stuff to court really needs to probably talk to me before they do that. And, and pretty much, they've been circumventing that. And that's, to me, a major step.
Yep. I know some of this stuff sounds kinda like a pain, but it's, it's the rule of order we have to go through to keep us, keep us out of trouble. I mean, you know, Person can be a pain in the rear sometimes, but I get it. It's the law. I get it. It's the law. We gotta, we gotta obey the law.
Okay, any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and take appropriate action regarding the Hood County relocation and reconstruction of county, uh, office policy and the revisions.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Dever to take appropriate action regarding the Hood County relocation and reconstruction of county offices policies, second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welborn. Okay. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the use of the square from Friday, July the 3rd, 6:00 a.m., to Saturday, July the 4th, to 11:00 p.m. for the old-fashioned 4th of July event, uh, event application contingent upon proof of insurance. Okay. Mr. Mike Scott, the illustrious CEO of the chamber.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I've been told in previous forums that I spoke a little too long, if you can imagine that. So we're gonna, we're gonna be short today. So, um, as you know, we've, we've kinda done, gone full circle here, and we've turned the July 4th celebration back on in its, in its glory. We are making it a continuation of the Small Business Resiliency Plan, which by the way, I think you know, but I will just tell you that we put out $196,000 worth of small business grants, what I call micro grants, to about 76 businesses in that program. And, and it was all private dollars with the exception of the city and the county. Some of your economic development funding went to that as, as a business recovery or business retention and expansion effort. And so probably about $8,000, city and county each participated in that. But other than that, it was all private money. So we're, we are turning this back on. We're making it a local event. I returned, I don't really want this publicized, Kathy, but I returned the money to all the vendors that, that have previously signed up from out of the area, and we are making it a local event. We're using local pop-up vendors, reduced in size, probably 20 to 25 on the square. We're hoping that some of the restaurants will want to put food booths out there, and some of the other, some of the other stores may want to show their wear. So I'm, I'm thinking 20 to 25 vendors on the square, pretty small. Let, let me back up just a little bit. I got ahead of myself. But, well, I guess not. I'll, I'll go through the, the timeline here in a minute. So pretty much that and the parade will be the same route, the same parade we've done every year, except it'll be downsized somewhere between 50 and 75% of what we normally see. So we will have to limit the number of entries in the parade. Just, again, and we're stressing, everything we put out there, we're stressing social distancing and, hey, be a Texan, you know, take care of yourself, take care of your neighbors, take care of your kids. So, so the timeline will be July the 3rd. We're asking to close the, the square on the 3rd and the 4th. The, the timeline will be an early morning load-in from the vendors on the square. About 12:00 p.m. on Friday, they will be open for business. We'll have a stage set up on the square. We'll do, pardon me. We'll have, we'll have some music during the day, and of course, Bridges and Crockett Streets will be closed as always. We'll have music during the day. We've got a great 11-piece show band that, I can't really tell you who it is right now, coming out of the Metroplex, that will be there Friday night for a street dance. And there, if you remember three or four years ago when we did that in the park, similar to that type of event, these, these folks are really, really big. And so that's all being set up by K-Hits Radio Station, and at no cost to us. They're getting the sponsorship and all that. And then, of course, the vendors, about 8:00 p.m. that night, the vendors will close. We'll, we'll have the street dance probably till, I don't know, 10, whatever quiet hours are. July the 4th, 8:00 a.m., I think Matt's still doing the Kiwanis 5K run that'll, that'll leave from the, from the high school area. And then at 10:00 a.m., the vendors will open. The parade will step off from the high school at, promptly at 10 o'clock. Shorter parade should be done by 11:30-ish, 11:15, 11:30-ish. And then vendors on the square during the day, also local music throughout the day. And then the vendors will close on, on Saturday evening, July 4th, about 8:00 p.m. And then at 9:45, we'll have fireworks over the lake. So in a nutshell, that's at 9:45, we'll have fireworks over the lake. So in a nutshell, that's where we are. I'm told that the city was signing the permit this morning. And I saw communication between Alicia and Rob at the city, and he's going to get that to her. The only thing we're holding on, and we always hold, is my insurance lady is getting bids. And as we always do, we will bring the insurance to you when we get it. So that's where we are. I think it's going to be a great event. People are ready to do something. I think it'll be a great event for tourism, perhaps. But let me mention that. We are not, we're working with Visit Granbury and HGMA. We're going to soft pedal advertising outside Hood County. Okay? And that's kind of a two-way street for Visit Granbury, because it's like, but I think the hotels will still be full. In fact, most of the hotels are already full. So they come for the event, they come for the fireworks. And when it's on a Saturday night, we get a lot of interest.
Festivity's going to be just on Friday and Saturday? Festivity's going to be on Friday and Saturday?
Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Okay.
And Friday is a county holiday.
Yes.
Right, so.
Yes.
Make any difference about closing the square. Well, that's good.
I'm glad that we're having it. Really.
Yes, sir, we are, too. I will tell you, my staff is burning the midnight oil. We lost about three months in this process. Normally, we start this process in January, which we did. And then we kind of lost March, April, and May. So we're scrambling to catch up. That's kind of where we are. Happy to answer any other questions.
Find out who organized that deal with Sunday. They managed to do that in about a week. Just saying. Anyway, I'm sorry.
You need to tie a rope to me and follow me around. Even one of my employees who is new to the organization, Shay was just absolutely astounded. She said, I cannot believe the level of detail and the number of, I mean, there are so many moving parts to this thing that it's just a constant struggle. So what else? I would like to say that I appreciate this group. I appreciate being dealt with with respect that I don't necessarily always get. I think Commissioner Eagle, who could probably agree with that at some point, and I'm not talking about you, obviously. But I appreciate the way you guys do your job, and you treat people with respect. And we don't always disagree. Sometimes we disagree. But I appreciate the way you run the program. So thank you.
Well, I just got a comment on this. I came to the city council last week and watched you make your presentation. And of course, you know I've supported your position on that.
Yes, sir, you did. Thank you.
And I don't think it's any secret that I think this county should be open totally. I thought that from the get-go. But I just find it ironic that we had to go and do what we had to do, and you had to do to get a 4th of July parade, when some outsiders can come in here this last weekend and have rope off the whole square, I mean, the whole square, for their little event. So I'm not sure I get the connection. I'm losing the translation of that. But I'm happy to put this on the agenda. And if there's no other discussion, make a motion that we, well, is there any other discussion?
I think the biblical phrase of that is, a prophet in his own city is...
I'd like to make a motion to respond to that. We did rope it off for safety. These people that are coming out, you're doing something constructive. I think that the element that were in the mind of these people that were being bussed in was to do something destructive, really, frankly.
Absolutely.
But I want to assure the citizens of Hood County that we were prepared for it, and that these block-offs was not to make it better for the protesters or slash rioters. It was to make sure that the property and citizens of Hood County were going to be protected, so that the law enforcement officers that we had in place, that were out of sight, but I can, they were in place, to be able to respond very, very efficiently, and very, very strongly in case somebody got out of hand. So that's the difference between this. And you're bringing something constructive. However, I do say this, you did go ahead and get permission from my wife to have the parade where she is the captain of the Hood County Sheriff's Posse, and tell her that she could do that before you called me and wanted to get my permission. So I don't know if you always cooperate fully with me.
Let me just set the record straight. Your wife called me. I didn't call her.
You did have a little leverage on me, though, when you said, hey, would I like to do this? And of course, I was.
And she was the first phone call. And the Sheriff's Posse has signed up, and Trip Across Cowboy Church has signed up. So we are going to have some questioning. But if I might respond to your previous comment, we do have a law enforcement meeting. We are working with law enforcement. And I'd be kidding you if I told you I'm not concerned about outside people. We've had some calls of people that just want to jump into our parade. And so I think the police department and sheriff department are going to have to be on their toes. So it is what it is. I think realistically speaking, safety needs to be a big part of it. And I think it is kind of a target, in a way, because people see what we're doing. And Fort Worth has canceled everything except their fireworks, and they were not even having spectators at their fireworks show. So they've compressed their fireworks show. They're shooting a bigger show this year than they normally do. So they're trying to get a lot of people that way. But so anyway, I think safety is paramount. And we're not going, for the COVID thing, we're not going to let anybody pass out anything. No walking down the street handing out candy, no walking down the street handing out, you know, and Dub Gillen would be sorry to hear that. He can't pass out his American flags. But there's some things like that that we just need to probably not do. I mean, that make sense. So that's where we are.
Good presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Any other discussion about the 4th of July parade? I hear a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the use of the square from Friday night, July 3rd, from Friday, July 3rd, at 6:00 a.m. to Saturday, July 4th, to 11:00 p.m. for the old-fashioned 4th of July event application contingent on proof of insurance.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to have our good old 4th of July parade here from Friday, July 3rd, at 6:00 a.m. to Saturday, July 4th, at 11:00 p.m. Second by Commissioner Dever, contingent upon the insurance, of course. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mike Scott. Okay. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to rescind or stop the purchase orders for radios for the sheriffs and constable departments, and schedule a workshop to consider different options for obtaining the best financing with the advantage of possible savings.
Yes, Judge, I put this on the agenda, and I just want to make sure that everybody's plain. The law enforcement need radios. And I, on the court, and I think the rest of the court, are totally in favor of the law enforcement having the proper equipment to do their job, and one of them is radios. All this is about is that we use capital money to purchase radios. Each department does their own thing. I had got information that other departments, such as the DPS, actually leases radios. All departments come together, decide what they want, and we lease these radios, and then potentially stay up with the software and the changes in radios as they're leased and not purchased, and we have to trade them in. So this is just about, let's sit down with all the departments, including the constables, the sheriff, fire departments. And I think the sheriff has already done a little bit of research on people that do this type of thing, leasing. And we could take a look at it, see if it's cost-effective to do leasing instead of purchasing these off of, out of 155, the capital money. So Sheriff, you got anything for us on this?
We've looked into it since this has been discussed. Chad has contacted Motorola to come and be here today. And Sean Scott's here, so I'll let him talk with you. He's been working for Motorola for many years. I met him years ago when he was a fire marshal in Parker County, knows what he's talking about. And Harris radios don't have any lease agreement information for us right now. But Motorola's been doing it for a lot of years, so he can, I know you want to have a separate meeting, but they can touch base with you and go over the highlights of stuff. So Sean Scott.
Okay. Mr. Scott.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. Casey Moore, direct rep for Motorola, here with us. I'm Sean Scott. I work for CrossPoint Communications as a manufacturer rep for Motorola. So as the sheriff mentioned, I worked for Parker County previously. And as you may know, we put in a large radio system back in 2006. We actually took advantage of this exact same program, funded all the radios for all the fire departments, funded the infrastructure of the system, the entire kit and caboodle for that project on this lease program. So I have some general information I'm happy to leave here with you. Specific highlights, there is a non-appropriations clause in this lease agreement, so that helps satisfy some Texas requirements. There is no early payout penalty, so if in a couple of years, the budget changes, and we want to go ahead and get out from underneath this, you can pay out the note and keep the radios and keep working and keep doing everything as you are. There's no penalty for doing so. Specific, we can fund the entire project from where it go. We can fund a portion of it. We can put money down. There's several different options. There's various ways of looking at this. And we are very competitive in lease rates. A recent project that I just did, rates came back at 2.74. So on top of that, purchasing agreements, as was mentioned earlier this morning, HGAC contracts are available, Texas DIR contracts are available for cooperative purchasing. So there are various other ways out to do that, as well as working with Motorola and the team, depending on what we're doing. Volume buying always has its benefits. So sit down, look at the total package of everything that we need to do, and everything that the county wants to accomplish, and we can work up something for you. So I don't want to take up too much time. Casey, did you have any?
Nothing else. Just here to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, we're here to help out in any way we can. We're here to work with the sheriff and crew, and we'll make things happen for you.
Good. Just one more thing. I'd like to have everybody involved, so they get their questions, instead of not wasting, but using the court's time here, is have a workshop. You come in and present. We have the auditor and the purchasing, and constables, sheriff, fire department, so we can grill you on how this would work, and how does it work with the present radios we've got, and a lot of questions that might come up during that time. So if you'd be willing to come back, we can set a date.
Absolutely. We can set up a date, make sure we have myself, technical representation, if we need it for there, to make sure we answer any and all questions as needed. And again, we'll have those, we'll get the specifics together of what needs to be done, come back, and then present to everyone later what we can do.
I got one question for the sheriff. The radios that we approved about a month ago, did you ever purchase them, or they just on hold?
The first ones that I brought to court, there are five radios, they were purchased, and I did receive those. Then others that were talked about after that, that's been stopped for now, so.
So the five that we approved, you have already purchased them?
Yes. And they're in service, so.
Questions, could you bring those back into a lease? The ones we've already purchased, could you bring those back into a lease?
We can work out something, absolutely, to do that. Not a problem.
I don't know if that works or not, but I'd like to know more about it before I make a decision.
Absolutely. We're good at getting creative. I can assure you that.
Hey, Chad, you got any comments?
Like the sheriff said, we've known Sean Scott for many, many years, and it's great that he's there. Motorola's the only one that I know of that has the lease options on the radios. Am I correct? Because Harris, after the discussions we've had, the radios we've already purchased, they don't have leases on those Harris radios. There's not a lease still on those. More history going back, we had the dispatch board meeting, or dispatch board was created in Hood County to have all the stakeholders to have input. Law enforcement, police department of the city, the county, both sides, all the fire, EMS. We've not had a meeting since 2016 for these things to be talked about and put together. We have three radio systems being used in Hood County. We're growing like crazy. And ever since 9/11, interoperability has been the biggest thing of how do we get all agencies, all law enforcement, EMS statewide, nationwide, on interoperability? That's where P-25 came in, P-25 radio systems. Then we have counties and cities that have moved up to 700 megahertz radio systems. And dealing with interoperability and some of those things, I wanted to bring to you today to talk about that. I brought Douglas O'Neil from Johnson County, who oversees their system, which butts up to Hood County, Constable Gibb and myself, our precincts butt up to that. City of Cresson, Cresson Fire Department is on that system that they have, and how those things work. And then, in charge of interoperability for the entire Metroplex area, one of the people that oversees that is Chief Police from the City of Cleveland, Chief Goodwin. And I'd like Douglas to come up and talk a little bit about the radio system, and the radios, and how they work. But the radios we have, we're still the ones, again, constables, that we don't have the radios to do that, to communicate. In 2018, when the radios were bought and given to us, one month afterwards, on the city band, they don't have encryption boards, they were useless one month after we bought them. We keep buying stuff that doesn't work for our needs, and that's what we've always complained about. So when this came up, and speaking with the auditor, and speaking, Jay brought this to your attention about leasing, I wanted to bring the people that have the knowledge, have the information, and this is Douglas O'Neil.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. I have a quick handout here for your perusal. Johnson County is a small portion of the, what is currently called a Fort Worth Regional Radio Network. They're changing it because the county of Dallas, the city and county of Dallas is getting ready to join. What you see there is the coverage area that covers approximately 30,000 users on that system. The county of Ellis is getting ready to join the system as well, so we're expanding. One of the nice things that we did when we created this system, there are, in layman's terms, there are channels that are nothing but interoperability, and they work from one end of the system to the other, without having to do relays, without having to do anything other than just turn your knob. So every police department can talk to every other police department in that system. If you were within coverage range, and sitting in my office, I can key up my radio and talk to the police department in Irving. I can talk to the fire department in Irving. I can talk to EMS in Irving, without having to go through multiple relays, without having to have delays. The advantage of that is if you end up in a large-scale event, everybody can switch to those common channels from different agencies, from different regions, and talk on that. So my recommendation to you, besides offering my services, if y'all need to have technical questions about that, is that when you do this, make sure that you look at interoperability between your agencies around the sides. I spent a lot of time at Cresson programming radios for Chief Becker, who has to talk to Johnson County, he has to talk to Hood County, he has to talk to Parker County, he has to talk to Tarrant County. So for his radios, it's a problem for him to have multiple bands, and it's exceeding costs to go buy multiple band radios or rent multiple band radios. So he was trying to get, he would like to get things more centralized. I brought Chief Goodman. He's the head of the Interoperability Governance Committee for the regional radio system. But as a user, he's well aware of what law enforcement goes through trying to talk to other agencies. So Chief.
You know, one of the problems we have in law enforcement and public safety in general is the ability or lack of ability to communicate with other agencies. Back in roughly 2012, maybe a little before then, Johnson County was looking at changing radio systems because we had a similar situation. We had multiple bands being used by public safety in the county. Fire department was on one band, law enforcement was on another, the city of Burleson was on another, a proprietary radio system. So when we joined this radio system, it put everybody in the county on the same radio system. With just the change of a channel knob on the radio, I can talk to fire, I can talk to Burleson, I can talk to the sheriff's office. As Douglas said, I can talk to the city of Fort Worth if I need to, Tarrant County Sheriff's Office if I need to. With the unrest we've had here in the last couple of weeks, the city of Dallas, who hasn't joined the system officially yet, but has some capability on the system, has used some of the interop capabilities to handle some of the protest things. So I would just want to encourage you guys, as you're looking or going through this process, to consider the possibility of joining the radio system, and consider the interoperability capabilities that the system has. You know, Hood County is out a little ways, kind of like Johnson County is from the core of the Metroplex. But as we grow, events move out into the more rural areas or the outlying areas, and that communication ability is essential, really.
Any questions we can answer for you, or?
I don't know if those are two subjects or not, but it's an interesting subject. If we can't communicate properly among departments... If we can't communicate properly among departments, we're missing the boat.
That's part of, as you select radios, you should take that into consideration, where you're going with your radio system is can you talk to each other, and then can you talk to the outlying agencies that you interact with?
I don't think there's anybody up here on the court, myself, is not an expert on radio. So, you're way over my head when you're talking about what all the things are. I'm, at least from the financing portion, and the ease of updating radios, is it easier to go through someone that has it on lease that, okay, if they got new stuff coming out, that's what we want, instead of having to sell our old ones and get our new ones? So, that's kind of where I was coming from on it, but there's-
I'm sure that Judge Harmon, my boss, would not mind if I came over here at your workshop, if you would like me to-
Love to.
-and lend my expertise, my, I've been doing this a long time, so.
So, you're with Harris, right?
Sir?
You're with Harris?
I'm with Johnson County.
What radios are-
What radios do you?
Oh, we have Motorola infrastructure. I have Motorola portable units. I have EF Johnson portable units. I have agencies that are looking at Tate radios for portable units. The beauty of a P-25 architecture is that it doesn't matter what your infrastructure is, your subscriber units can be whatever you want to go by, as long as they're P-25 and meet some minimum guidelines for your system.
Sheriff, we discussed this about a few years ago, this Motorola. At one time, it's like $9 million to do this, right?
Yeah, it started out, I don't remember even what year that was. It started out, every year it started going up. We had a consultant involved in that. So, the last time, when we cut things off with the consultant, it was up to $9 million.
Yeah.
Then we got with Factory Motorola and it dropped it down to about six, I think is where we left it. And some of the court members at that time, that was buying it outright. That wasn't leasing it. We didn't talk about any of that. Weren't really interested, and the city wasn't interested, so that's kind of where it stopped. So, after that, then myself and Ray Wilson and others, we've got together and tried to piece things together. So, that's kind of where we've been working. And like over the weekend was a good example with everybody trying to work together. We patched radio channels together in dispatch, and it worked, but not as well as it should have been. But we got the job done and didn't have a whole bunch of problems. But, yeah, I don't remember what year. I still have the booklet that Motorola gave us in my safe up at the office.
I think I've got it, too.
So, it's been quite a few years ago when we started all that, so.
But this diagram here, I don't know if you've seen this, it's metroplex. Do we need to be in coalition with this group of people up there in the metroplex, all the way to Irving, Fort Worth, Dallas?
Middlelothian?
Yeah, middlelothian.
In this day and age, with everything that's going on, we need all the help we can get. We need all the support. They need all the support. I think the chances on them asking us to go to the metroplex to help out are probably slim to none, but-
And I'm not being, that's, wasn't a negative answer, guys. Don't get me wrong.
I could tell you, I have an audio recording that the City of Grandview had a bank robbery in 2017?
It was before then. The radio system was very due at the time, but the City of Grandview had a robbery that occurred. A pursuit ended up happening. They went up into Alvarado, through Johnson County, into Mansfield, up close to Grand Prairie. And all the agencies on the system and the jurisdictions were able to communicate on the interoperability channels and get in position. And eventually, the pursuit ended with no injuries, suspects were taken into custody, all because of this radio system and the ability to communicate. You asked the Sheriff about needing to communicate with the other agencies in the metroplex. The Sheriff said, Fort Worth's probably not going to call Hood County to come help. They're not going to call Cleveland to come help, but the manpower that Fort Worth has, it wouldn't be unlikely to have Fort Worth come and help us or help in Hood County. And the Fort Worth radios have the ability, just at the change of a channel knob and the change of a zone on the radio, to come into Johnson County and communicate with us without any patching occurring or any other intervention from a dispatch center.
What about the West Texas county? I mean, the further west you get, you know where I'm going, it's less technology. Will they be, will the West Texas, like E wrath County, going on down to Brownwood, will they be able to communicate with us on their system?
I was going to say, so, I actually work with a lot of those West Texas agencies and counties. In fact, E wrath County, we're upgrading E wrath County right now to a P-25 level that will be just the same. It'll be a channel change for those guys as well in E wrath County. Summerville County still has some work to do, but even going as far west as Midland, Odessa, and the Permian Basin region, we have P-25 infrastructure that takes care of all of that, that is the same technology as what you're seeing on this map.
Okay.
So, we're just adding Ellis County and Waukesha Hatchie to this map as well, as Douglas mentioned. But also on top of this, outside of the HGAC contracts and DIR, there's additional discounts that being part of the Fort Worth regional system affords anybody that's a member agency additional discounts on purchasing, so.
I noticed Palapena was on there, so.
Palapena does have some P-25 capability within their county. It's not their main infrastructure at the moment. So, there's, you know, the system's growing westerly. Parker County originally had their own system, their own core, but they're working on building a bridge into the Fort Worth system that will grow to, so you'll have coverage to your north as well. So, roughly 20% is the additional discounts off of contract pricing that you'll get as being part of the Fort Worth system.
Okay.
So, of the big conglomerate purchasing power.
Like I say, don't take my questions negative.
No, no, no. I understand completely.
Trying to figure this out.
I got one question for probably Chad and the Sheriff. How much communication do y'all actually do with Fort Worth or Johnson County? I mean, do y'all talk a lot or just a few times a year?
We spend the majority of our time, and it has been in years, on having to call and meet with them or have them get somebody to meet with us. Because the unique thing about the constables and what we do is we also, with these court orders, sometimes we end up in Parker County, Johnson County, Palapena County, E wrath County, on the edge, sometimes in Tarrant County, working with them in the south side of Fort Worth over there, dealing with all these documents and some of these people that we're dealing with on seasoned assets, or if we're dealing with some of these Attorney General papers we have, and in some cases, executions, where we're having to work interagency together. So, it's quite often. And one of the things that you brought up also, the discounts from whenever the first approval was until we got that second quote on those radios, there was a savings of $7,000 by trading in old radios when that comes in. So, that cut that cost down from $47,000 initially for 10 radios to $40,000. So, that's where that stands, if you didn't know that or weren't up to date on that yet.
But there was $1,100 per radio for trunking, right?
And that trunking is part of that radio system to communicate with every agency and everybody in Johnson County. The one of the unique things that, in speaking with Douglas, when they did that within the county, the city pays their portion. Well, like in the city of, all these cities in Johnson County that are on this, you look at the City of Granby, you've got Public Works, you've got Electrical, you've got Water, you've got Road, you've got law enforcement. Every one of those are all on the 700-megahertz system. And Douglas can speak more to it about having seven channels with 2,000 radios, and they all work seamlessly with no issues. And it's like, those are the things that we need to be looking at on how to better our communications, where it's all seamless and where we need to be on that trunk system, and it saves everybody, and everybody pays their portion into the system.
Now, the five that we bought for the Sheriff, they didn't have trunking, did they?
No, I didn't order them with trunking. We don't use trunking around here. I've learned a lot more since I've started digging into it. I think the system that I brought to you last summer with the simulcast system, that was using a standard conventional system. But the future of, and cheaper too, is going with a trunking system is what I've been finding out, too. So, that's the wave of the future, I guess. So, that option can be added into those radios when the time comes. So, I'm, it's an extra cost right now, but when we're involved with the rest of this system or other agencies, then it's going to be part of the future for all that, is what I'm finding out. With adjoining counties, just like Chad said, with, over the weekend, we dealt with Somerville County and E wrath County was in to help us with all this stuff. And everybody's on different radio systems, so that, we were handing out radios and trying to keep everybody on the same page. So, the future needs to change, and we need to all somehow get on that bandwagon together. So, when we have pursuits like that, was one of the things that was talked about. Unfortunately, we have stuff that comes through the county, leaves the county. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had a problem with being able to communicate between Somerville County and even the troopers. We're trying to talk to the, everybody down there in Somerville County. So, we had some problems, got it worked out, went back to an old analog channel, and everybody could communicate. So, that's frustrating when you're trying to catch somebody that's running from you. So, it happens more times than not, and the future is looking bleaker all the time, I guess, if you watch the news. So, we all need to be able to communicate. And fire, EMS, it's all one big happy family that we need to work together. So, we need to somehow figure out how we can get there.
I got one more question. And Chad, will it, is it an emergency that if we delay the purchase of the radios that we already authorized to PO, so we could have a workshop, decide where we want to go? We should be able to do that between now and the next court? The next court decide where we're going to go with these radios? Is that going to be any issue for you?
The issue still is, we can't communicate with the Sheriff on 700. We don't have those radios capability. We've had instances, as we've stated before, we've got burglaries in progress where we've got a constable a block away and they know nothing of it. We got another one where we've got a subject that's barricaded in a house, we got a constable two blocks away, and we know nothing of it. You know, those safety issues for the public and assisting the public, assisting the Sheriff, you know, those things, when we're out there in the county.
I'm not questioning that. I'm just wondering about the timing. Can we take a look and get on the right track?
We can, but the one thing on the discount on those one radios, that ends June 30th.
Yep. We'll have another court on June 26th, and maybe we can come up with a decision by talking to the auditor purchasing and get all of our ducks in a row and go down the right path to get everybody where they need to be on this communication. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
And that's why I like, when this brought up, the stakeholders of us being in it, the people that know the system-
Yes.
-the way things are changing, to bring to you, to have some more of that information for you. And whoever you need in that workshop meeting.
Yep. You know, nobody up here is against streaming cash. We're just trying to figure out how to get the most radios for our money.
And we agree with that totally, and that's where we keep coming up, is we're always left out, and we're coming, bringing it up in the back end. And we, you know, here we are.
Good. All right. We're ready to go forward?
Let me ask one question. Is the, E wrath County, did they go with the Motorola system?
Yes, sir.
Did they lease a purchase?
Leased.
Lease?
Yes. So-
Did y'all do a workshop with them and explain the advantages of leasing or purchasing, and they chose the lease option?
Yes, sir. We worked with them for several months, I would say over a year, to get everything done that they needed to. From engineering the system to talking about the leasing, to talking about how we're going to fund it to go into the court to make it happen, so.
And most of the agencies on this diagram here that you gave us, are they all Motorola system as well?
All of them are.
All of them are?
Yes, sir. So, the entire infrastructure, the entire backbone is all Motorola. And so, in fact, Ellis County, our most recent addition, Ellis County and Waukesha Hatchie to the big network, both of those agencies are part of, took advantage of the lease as well.
I know both the judges in Ellis County and in E wrath County. Did Ellis County choose to lease as well?
Yes, sir. Judge Little was very instrumental in helping make that happen.
Judge Lipp?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good.
And the unique thing about this radio system is by-
Glad you brought that up, Commissioner.
-the upgrading and going in it.
Good deal.
We save money on the infrastructure with a Fort Worth system of costs that we wouldn't have by being part of that system. Our only costs are our repeaters that we have here and things in place, but then, that portion of it, and I think those, on that, it's $2 a year per radio for their system to use that. So, that helps save us a lot of cost on that infrastructure.
Well, glad you came up here today.
Happy to.
Like I always said, you may outrun Chad, but you came out, like Bonnie and Clyde, but you can't outrun a radio, can you?
The absolute corrector.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I would, unless anybody else, eh? Make a-
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
I'd just make a motion that we postpone the purchase of the radios for the constable and the sheriff's office and set up a workshop as soon as possible to determine which direction we go on purchasing, leasing, and how big do we, how big do we want to go with it? How do we do it? So, do that in a workshop. That's my motion.
A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to stop or rescind the purchase orders for the, actually, the Harris radios and have a workshop to decide what is the best plan for obtaining the, the best radio system for all of our law enforcement here in Hood County. Now, here's second. Second by Commissioner White. I think we've discussed it enough, so all those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number six. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the PetSense donation acceptance agreement. Sheriff?
Judge Commissioners, we've had a couple of modifications to this in communication with our county attorney. So, I don't know if this got to you, so I'll throw this forward. The only changes were where it stated on the original agreement was 501(c)(3), and we're not a 501(c)(3), we're a county government. So, I wrote that in there, and those two places that need to be modified and initialed that. Ms. McNabb is here to talk about whatever we need to talk about on this. We've had this agreement, just basically a handshake agreement with PetSense since January of 2014 going on. And in that time, we've adopted 1,040 cats. And sometimes cats are hard to get adopted out. But that has made a big, big difference in getting, getting cats adopted out. They don't do any dogs up there, but just the cats. So, when they came forward, and this was brought to my attention, that we needed to have this agreement that PetSense came up with, and we need to move forward and however we can to work this out. So, with discussion back and forth between management at PetSense and Sergeant McNabb and the county attorney, you have before you that agreement that we need to get in place and sign, so we can keep on business as usual and being able to adopt out the cats.
We have the world famous Kelly McNabb, that's written up in all these national magazines and stuff.
World famous, she was able to take-
The same one?
-come in today to talk with you, sir.
Well, thank you for coming in, Sergeant. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I just hope that we can get this agreement signed and approved, because it would be detrimental to our adoptable cats here at Hood County. Like the Sheriff said, we've adopted over 1,000 cats, and that is lives saved for them. And it's my understanding, a couple of years ago, Tractor Supply purchased PetSense. So, this is just a nationwide contract that they're having all of their stores with the, their adoption partners.
Tractor Supply helps us a lot on our adoption locations, don't they?
Yes, yes. They do.
That's a lot of cats.
It is.
How'd you like to herd 1,000 cats?
So, and the way Sergeant McNabb has worked this is in conjunction with the staff up there and volunteers. So, it's been very little cost upfront to Hood County with paying employees. They oversee everything, but it's been a great system for quite a few years, and all those cats getting adopted out, yeah, we want to keep this going, so.
Right.
So, I'd recommend the court pass this, sign this agreement, and we keep moving forward.
With the approval of Sergeant McNabb.
Yeah. How can we turn that down?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion. And Matt, Matt, you have looked at the contract, revised it, and everything's good? You like it?
Right. I had noticed the thing about the 501(c)(3) was we're not, so-
Right.
-I don't want that to torpedo us somewhere down the road. So, they said just write it in and initial it, and so, that was their side saying that. in and initial it, and so that was their side saying that, so we said fine, so that's what the sheriff did, so I think we're good.
You're good?
So that's, yeah, exactly what we did, is wrote it in, initialed it, and that's what the judge, I just handed to him, so they're happy, we're happy, everybody's happy.
I'd like to make the motion, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the revised contract for the PetSense donation acceptance agreement.
I second that motion.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Thank you, Sergeant McNabb. All those in favor of adopting the PetSense adoption partner with the terms and conditions? A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton, second
Commissioner Dever, second by
County Judge Ron Massengill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the i-ticket agreement with Net Data.
Come on down.
Okay.
JPs.
Got the important people up here now.
All right, good morning, commissioners and judge. This was just, we talked about this last commissioners' meeting, and this was just to bring it back to the court, that Becky has, and, well, she's going to set up a line item. We're going to take it from the tech fund, so it won't even have to come out of that transaction fee, that there's a tech fund that can only be used in the JP courts, and it has anything to do with using the computer, whether it be software, you know, any of those enhancements that you use, and so this is something that we could use it for. And we have money in our, in our budgets to initially set that up, cover it with no cost to the county at all.
I know there was a little discussion on it last court, and you're just going to have to set up a line item account for it and all that.
Right, and in the interim, we talked about using technology funds, because it was appropriate, and that's the case, that won't cost the county any money. Those are funds that are completely separate, and I am 100% in agreement with this plan, take some workload off of these two departments and help them in that respect. And they do the bulk of the i-tickets, the other two JP's, it's not prudent for them, and so we've got a place that won't cost the county any money and will help their departments.
Well, it's a fine example of what works for one court does not, could work for another court.
They can also be put on at any, at any time, so it's not, you know, it's not a big deal to do it at any time.
When the new budget comes out, the same line item going to be used?
Yes, sir. I'm going to go in and, you know, as we're going through budget hearings and we come across things like this, we will get the 21 budget updated with that information, so that we will be in place for next year. We will do it now, we'll probably, I'll get the line accounts in place on the next court, and they can start doing this on July 1st, a good start date.
This won't affect our future budgets in any way. We won't increase anything, so that's what we're looking for. Save some time going back and forth. It'll save some time, and it'll save some manpower in the office, too.
Well, and just like through the pandemic, we've had a, where DPS was not in their office, so the tickets weren't even there for us to pick up. So we had to wait for that clerk to come in and notarize things, and this way, they'll go directly to our office, she can notarize them at her convenience, we can pick up the paper tickets, you know, once, once a week and not have to deal with this, but they're automatically into the system.
Make life easier for y'all.
Make life much easier, yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I hear motion.
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion to approve the i-ticket agreement with Net Data for JP 3 and JP 4.
A motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the i-ticket agreement with Net Data, second
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, item number eight. Consider and take appropriate action to approve request of the U.S. Board on geographic names for recommendation about a proposal to change the name of Bowser Lake in Hood County to Lake Arthur. Now, this came up at the last commissioners' court meeting, and we didn't, and Alicia is not here today, but nobody responded from the Bowser side at that time about if they had any objection to it. Did any
Yes, Judge, I called, I went to school with her, known her all my life, called her, and of course, the Bowser Ranch, she used to go on that side of 144, and I called her, and she said she had no problem. She said it'd be, it'd be okay with her to change it to the Arthur Lake.
You go to school with everybody.
Yeah, I spoke to her yesterday also, Judge, and she's, she's, she's perfectly fine with it.
Okay.
You go to school with her, too?
No.
Not as old as James.
These two commissioners, they either related to everybody in the county, or know everybody in the county, or went to school with everybody.
One of your
And she is my third cousin of mine also, Judge.
She's 37.
Third cousin.
Oh, third cousin, okay. So, do I hear an appropriate motion here?
Yeah, Judge, I'd like to make the motion to consider and take appropriate action to approve request, United States Board of Geographic Names for Recommendation Upon Proposal Change the Name of Bowser Lake in Hood County to Lake Arthur.
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second, made by Commissioner Dever to change the name of Bowser Lake in Hood County to Lake Arthur, and second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. All right. Next item, consider and take appropriate action to approve appointment of Greg Neal, Reserve Deputy Constable for Precinct 2. Mr. Constable Shirley.
I'm asking the commissioners' court to approve Greg Neal as a reserve deputy constable for Precinct 2, to increase the service to the community in Precinct 2. We have some increased jurisdictional issues that are going to happen here later this year regarding justice court, so it's going to increase our workload quite a bit, and I'm trying to get more manpower for our precinct without burdening the county with any additional resources, which is why I'm asking for a reserve deputy. Thank you.
Okay.
I understand, all it takes is just a $50 bond is what, what the county's
Yes, sir, just, just the bond is the only actual expense to the county.
Okay. Judge
Guy?
He is, I'll vouch for him 100%. He's, he spent, he's audibly retired from the Dallas Police Department, he's Marine Corps.
Is he here?
He is here.
Oh, there he is. All right. So he got, has he got anything to say?
I know him.
I'm sure he could say something.
All right, then, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Greg Neal as a reserve deputy constable, Precinct 2.
I'll second.
A motion's been made in second, made by Commissioner Cotton, to approve Greg Neal as being a reserve constable for Precinct 2, and second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 10. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve additional work to Peacemaker's Garden at the Law Enforcement Center. I'm going to tell you this, if anybody's seen the plans to this, this is really wonderful. I mean, that was awful bleak, hard to look at back there, especially for the jailers and everybody in the jail that could never take a break, that were looking at that, this is really a good idea. So Sheriff, what do you have?
Well, Judge and commissioners, this kind of got started because of the coronavirus, the people couldn't go out for lunch or dinner or anything like that, but they'd come on the back porch, and so we decided, hey, we need some picnic tables, things like that, so that's how it started. And then here, a couple of courts ago, I came to you and asked if we could put in an awning up there, and if it was paid for by other means, which it was, and it's done, and it's installed. So there's four picnic tables back there in that awning, that metal awning, but it's kind of grown from there, a lot of people want to get involved, even make it nicer than what it is. So you have the same picture that I have here of their plans for the future of the gardens, but because it's affecting county property is why I'm bringing it to you. I'm for it, the employees are definitely for it.
This is all donation stuff, right, Roger?
Correct, it is. So the only reason, I want to make sure you guys are on board with it, is because it's going to be built or added to on county property, so they want to put in some sidewalks, plant some bushes, plant some trees.
And you're going by policy.
Huh?
And you're going by policy.
Yes. Bringing it for, before you, so want to make sure, and you're invited to come down and
That's why I say, when you get the grill going, we come down and get hamburgers.
Yeah.
All right.
Don't have any hamburger meat, but we'll figure out something when that day happens, so.
Okay.
Yeah, all that's been donated, so it's just expanding, so just want to make sure, since it's county property, that you guys are aware of it and are in favor of it.
That's, that's why, you know, a lot of people didn't know our policy existed, and you've always been good about following policy, and it's not costing county anything, but we still, we're over all the grounds and buildings, and you're asking permission to do it, and thank you.
We don't want the sheriff violating the law.
No, and you guys are welcome to come anytime, so
Okay.
To sit on the picnic tables and reflect, so.
Well, I also question Judge Howe, I asked him if he was a good carpenter, because he's got down here that he was going to build that, that bench around that tree there, and I said, are you a good carpenter? He said, I built my house, so I guess that's a pretty good recommendation then on that deal, so. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve additional work to Peacemaker's Garden at the Law Enforcement Center.
Your second.
Thank you.
Your second, Judge.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to approve the additional work at Peacemaker's Garden at the Law Enforcement Center, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, thank you very much.
That's Sheriff. All right, item number 11, consider and take appropriate action on request to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the correctional dental service agreement.
Judge, commissioners, this has been an agreement that we've had in place for a number of years. It started out more of a, because of the cost and because of the security of protecting and keeping everybody safe with those inmates, we used to take them out, but now the dentist comes in, works on them in the nurse's room, we've got him set up, and so it's same dentist, same contract, nothing's changed. It's actually not due till July 27th, but we want to, we don't want there to be any glitches or anything, so that's why I figured I'd just put it, we got it from him, put it on the court agenda so we could talk about it, but costs have not changed, he does us a great job, he saves the county a lot of money in regards to that, just like any medical expenses that we have with those inmates, the dentistry is part of that, too, and so he's the best bang for the buck, and he comes to do it here, so we don't have to transport anybody to an actual office. So it's a great deal, we need to keep it going.
County attorney, look at this contract.
It's exactly the same as it was last year, so I believe, I can't remember
I remember looking at it a year ago, but I don't think I looked at it, I mean, it's the same one, I guess, so.
Yeah, and it's the same one, except the date's changed, so.
In other words, we want to lock in Dr. Raymond Rainan as soon as possible, so he can't get out of it. Am I right?
Yes.
You want to speak on this?
No, I'm not.
Do what?
Have.
He's your dentist, too?
No.
Okay.
Now, I just need to have you in your motion, should you decide to do this, to exempt purchasing from the competitive bidding under professional services, Chapter 262.
Remember all that, Judge?
Yeah, I do. Okay.
Have you got that, Katie?
Okay, yes, I do, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the correctional dental service agreement, but to exempt the purchasing department under Chapter
262.
262. I hear a second. Okay, who's going to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Judge.
Okay, motion's made by Commissioner White. How about a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. I'll be glad to sign that dental agreement.
Thank you.
Saves you from taking those prisoners out to a regular dental office, doesn't it?
Yes, and that actually, a few years ago, we had an attempted escape with one of the transport officers, which they did not escape, got him back in the car, got him back to the jail, so, yeah, this is a big help to have a dentist come to us instead of us go to them.
Okay, good deal, Sheriff, okay.
You don't have no toothaches in the jail.
But, you sure he's not your dentist?
Now, we'll send the paperwork through the next court if you ask to sign.
To sign today? Okay, we'll exempt according to 262, okay, all right. Okay, the last item, based on your information, consider and take appropriate action regarding resolution declaring Hood County a sanctuary county for all businesses. Now, I want to say something first. There is no doubt in my mind, or I think in any of the commissioners' mind, that all businesses in Hood County are essential. Just the nomenclature about the word essential, the governor has picked up and chosen that word, which I hate that he did that, because these mom and pop stores that are around the square that I looked at for the last March, April, May in the beginning, well, March, April, and May, that were closed, while Walmart and Kroger were selling clothing, it used to just tear me up every day to see that, selling the same type of items. But, so in my mind, all businesses are essential, and we're getting back to work as soon as possible. I think, I love going to restaurants, I've been going to restaurants, and they're really, we're getting real close to that 100% mark if we're not there already, and nobody's saying anything about it, and people are moving about it, and I'm thrilled to see that, and we're right here, right at the cusp of, I'm thinking that everything's going to be open, and I think the Fourth of July parade is one of the best things that's about, after seeing all of this, I'm hoping that this will be erased, and we won't have to make any kind of distinction between essential and non-essential business. I want all business to be open. How could I, how could I want anything less than that? This is how the county makes money. We want everybody to be prosperous, not doing well and eking by, but to be prosperous so they can pay their taxes and be responsible citizens. But I also feel like that right now, we're right here at the cusp, and I think that although I'm not willing to sell my freedom for anything, my freedom's not for sale, but we have come in, don't we, about $505,000, Ms. Kidd?
Yes.
You expect to get it today?
It is there today.
It is?
It is?
It is due today?
It's there today.
It is in the account? What is it, $505,000?
Judge, isn't there another potential millions that are possible?
Two million.
Do what?
There's another two, two and a half million dollars potential that we can get.
Another $2 million, that's, that's
What's there?
Jay, don't let me say the wrong thing now.
You're being $536,000.
Right.
And we, and by the way, thanks, Jay Webster, for making sure and staying up on top of that. The very first day that I could sign something called the At a Station Agreement, where I could agree to open up the Hood County businesses more, I signed it that day because Jay was right on the ball, had it, and dishes finally realized that we were right and they were wrong, and we were allowed to open up at 50% right away. So we never did really go to 25, we went to the 50 right away when we could do this. I'm all for our businesses, I want everybody to understand that, and the way that our government is going and seeing stuff, it's, it's just sad to me that our country sees this. I saw in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, over the weekend, where a bunch of Antifa buses were going to be bused in, and the citizens all appeared there with all their AR-15s and 45s and 9mm. Man, that could have been a bloodbath there, but I want you to know that the sheriff and the way that they've handled our deal, they were out of sight, but they were ready here to protect our citizens and our property. I want this to go away so badly, like I know that everybody in the county wants it to go away. But that's what I want to say. The only thing about the resolution, and I've tried to work with Commissioner Eagle on it, but it's because of the language in my side, I'm going to discuss this myself, about, about considers all business essential, sure we do, but I don't think that we as a commissioners' court, at least from my perspective, have taken an oath to uphold the law. And the problem is with 418 of the government code. The legislature passed that code and gave the governor the authority to pass laws in the event of a disaster, and those law, those orders have the force and effect of law. Me as a county judge swore an oath to uphold not only the federal, the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution, but all laws that are made in accordance with those two constitutions. And I cannot support something that we as a commissioners' court would say that we are not going to follow the state laws. Fortunately, we're not under any federal laws, but under the governor's laws right now. The governor is the person that's in charge of our other $2 million that has already been tagged for Hood County. Am I right on that, Jay? We got another $2 million that we're entitled to that are due us. to that are due us. I don't think the governor's going to call a special legislature between now and January of '21. So he's the one that's going to be handing out all the money. Now, I don't want Hood County to be 253rd on the list of getting the money, so that's my deal about it. I want everybody to understand, nobody ever better misquote me to saying that I don't think all Hood County businesses are essential, because I think they are. And I don't care if you have a lawn service, or you are a neurosurgeon at the hospital, and anything in between. You are essential, and I'll treat you as such. But I can't sign something, vote for something, or sign something that has my name to it, that would put me in violation of what I consider to be a violation of the law and above the oath that I've taken. Hopefully, the next legislature is going to refine 418, where we won't be put in that predicament again, and at least there's going to be a time limitation that would be put on something, or a requirement that the state legislature be brought back into session, and then we follow those rules. So that's my position on it. I now open it up for comment to any other commissioner.
Mind if I say something, Judge?
Not at all, since it's your resolution.
Since I put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
And I appreciate what you had to say. And I guess this brings up an interesting issue, because we've got a dilemma here when you say that you're going to preserve and protect and defend the Constitution and the laws. When there, there's a contradictory situation that comes up, which one do you go with? Which one do you go with? I'm going to go, I know this is basically a standing agenda item now, from yours truly, and I've struggled with whether I was going to put this back on the agenda. And I've decided, and it appears that the wind's still blowing the wrong way up here, but I decided, as a matter of principle, that I'm going to keep bringing this to this court until either the governor quits playing his games, or we, the folks up here change their mind. And I want to go through a couple of assumptions here that happened when we first started this business back in March. Assumption number one, given to us by our Dr. David Blocker, we were told that the optimum time we were going to need to run this through and determine whether or not we could go back to business as usual was eight weeks. We're in our 12th week. We were told on March 30th that these cases were going to double every three days, and we had six cases at that, on that day, on March 30th. And I haven't done the interpolation, but I just did, I just went through five, six, eight runs, and that would be 568, and that was somewhere back in April. We would be up to four, 5,000 cases now or more. That didn't happen. So assumption number one, eight weeks, we've gone our eight weeks plus four. We've proven enough that the cases aren't here to prove, to justify shutting this whole county down. Number two, we are still, according to David Blocker, according to Friday's press release, he still says that our risk assessment in this county is a substantial risk. And I went to city council the other night and talked about this when Mike Scott presented, my, my good buddy Mike Scott presented the, to the council to, hey, let's do, let's go back and do the Fourth of July parade. And they agonized over them. They, they had to, they asked questions, and they were really trying to decide what would be the best thing to do, which to me is a no-brainer. You know, liberty and freedom is, that's not anything to even agonize over. You put, let people do what they need to do. Anyway, assumption three, assumption two, that he's, Dr. Blocker's declared us a substantial risk, and I totally disagree with that assessment. It's ignoring the facts. The numbers do not back up this assumption. It ignores Sweden, it ignores the Stanford report, it ignores report after report and fact after fact that has come in since March 30th. Now, on March 30th, we didn't have, it was admitted, I, I know that Jay Webster and the doctor both told us, we don't have enough facts here. And I, and I understand that. We didn't have very many facts on March 30th. We got them now. And I, I pointed out to the city council the other night, and this is, this is a incidence rate as a factor of population. E wrath County, four tenths of a percent have been allegedly diagnosed with COVID, four tenths of a percent of the population. Hamilton County, one tenth of a percent. Johnson County, one tenth of a percent. Palo Pinto County, one half of a tenth of a percent. Parker County, one, less than a half a percent. Somerville County, zero. Boski County, four thousandths of a percent. Comanche County, nine thousandths. Eastland County, three thousandths. Hill County, seven thousand. Stevens County, four thousand. Hood County, a half a percent as a function of our population. We've had 31 cases, according to Dr. Blocker's Friday report, 31 cases, of which four are currently classified as active, which means apparently they've still got it. The other ones either, we've had two alleged deaths, and everybody else has, has gone home and gotten well. So why am I bringing this again? Well, I think it's time to get real. And I want to point out, in my agenda item, I said, due to changing information, last week, Eastland County, out west of us, took the same resolution and passed it, 5-0. Yesterday, I went to Stevens County, which is up Breckenridge is the county seat, and Stevens County passed this resol, this exact resolution, except changed it for their name, 5-0. And both of them did it, and I don't know, how did Cisco go last night? So I don't know what happened to Cisco last night. I understand that they were going to put that on the city agenda last night. But why am I bringing this up the way I am? It's time for us to go back to work. It's time for us, in my opinion, to go, do I go with the Constitution, or do I go with a man-made law by Governor Abbott, one man sitting down there, that contradicts the Constitution? Now, in my opinion, the governor's wrong. He's been wrong about this since the third week into this. We are not Dallas County, we are not Tarrant County, we are not Harris County. The government, the governor is not going to act. He's not going to do it. We've had this carrot hanging out in front of us now for nearly three months. Just give us one more week. Oh, we'll get you back in, just give me another week. And that's not happening. In the meantime, they're, they spent $300 million with a company in Allen, Texas, to start figuring out how they're going to contact, trace everybody. Now, I will grant, this is something that happened yesterday in Stevens County. They actually put that on their agenda, I mean, excuse me, in their resolution. I thought, man, I wish I'd have thought of that. I'll be back with that one, by the way, just to give you all a preview. So, because they, they are, they are not going to participate in this contact, contact tracing. Now, one of the biggest objections that I've heard over and over and over again is that if we don't do what the governor tells us, we're not going to get any money. And I would request that our state representative, Mike Lang, who is here, would you mind coming to the podium and addressing that particular issue and anything else?
Judge, Court, sorry to be here under these circumstances, but as far as the money goes, I believe the judge and Jay Webster have things under control on the FEMA money, how much you're going to get, that, as far as reimbursement, and then the $55 per head, per capita, money that goes to the county, then the county divvies that up to the taxing entities. So you will get the money. The, the idea that the governor is sitting in his office, holding the purse strings, and says, release it to Hood County, or release it to Stevens County, that's not the way it works. You guys fill out the paperwork, you guys fill out the receipts, you take the expenditures, and you put that in, and you get your money back. The per capita just comes to you. I think you've already received some money, you said?
Yeah, we received $500,000 today.
You've already received some money. The money's going to be coming. I, I don't know, I guess if you think the governor's going to be petty and, you know, zero into Hood County and all these other counties, I don't see that. You can ask the governor if he's going to be petty about that. He seems to be radio silent for most reps and senators at this point. So there's a lot of senators and reps that want this open. We want a special session to fix this. It's a shame that 418, which was used for hurricanes, fires, tornadoes, morphed into something for a pandemic, because it wasn't meant for a pandemic in 1975. Yet the governor took it upon himself, dismissing the separation of powers, to do exactly what he wanted to do with his orders, executive orders. In turn, he has put out 20, 30 executive orders now, and he takes away executive orders and says, we won't do that. We won't put people in jail. Well, guess what happens? DPS, TDLR, they haven't done anything. He pushed it down to the counties and cities and said, you guys handle it. And what happens? You get a Shelley Luther case out of Dallas. Was any state involved? Any state offense involved? No. They were trying to follow the orders with a bench warrant. That didn't come from the state. That came from a judge. So he's put it upon the counties to do all the administration of this, and hasn't done anything himself except put out executive orders. Where I'm going with this is, this is local control. These other counties said, we're done with this, we're opening up. The numbers don't match, the pandemic doesn't match, we're opening up, which means personal responsibility. If you want to stay home, stay home. You want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If your business wants to stay shut down, stay shut down. Nothing's mandatory. I'm under the opinion, as a state rep and myself, that lives here in Hood County, that this should be open, totally. I have seen nothing as far as any data that suggests otherwise. This is your call, this is your court, but it's also my community. And from a state perspective, we are doing everything we can to address the separation of powers issue and the 418 issue. Does that address Commissioner?
Mike? When the governor put this out, and after 30 days, do you, that, you as a state representative and a senator, can they not override these if they think it's unconstitutional? Or why haven't they?
Here's, here's what's in effect. There's a mechanism in 418 that says the legislature can override, but the mechanism is, the governor's the only one that can call a special session. So it puts it back in the governor's position to do that, and that, that's what needs to be changed. We have, we have a bill in, in, well, we're trying to do a, present a bill if we have a special session. We've got one in the works through Legislative Council, and the attorneys are looking at it, to redo 418, to take that out, to put mechanisms, mechanisms in there. But that doesn't change the fact what's going on now. That, that will be for the future. But what's going on now is something that, what you said, that the mechanism is for somebody to get arrested, one of your citizens in your counties, to get arrested, take that to court, take it to the district court, and then take it to the Texas Supreme Court. So this would be a mechanism, like Stevens County, like Eastland County, and like some other counties I hear that are supposed to be doing this coming up their commissioner courts, for the commissioner's courts say, this is what we're going to do. And if the governor has a problem with it, the Attorney General can step in and say, we don't agree with it. Okay, then take it to district court. Let district court decide what's going to go on, and then take it to the Supreme Court if you need to. But there's been nothing that the governor's done. The governor said he doesn't want anybody in jail. He wants everybody opening up his businesses. He wants people to make a living, just like you do. So what's stopping people from doing that? You know, you say the government. Well, I am the government, and you are the government. We are the government. We're supposed to be here making the decisions. Now, your decision could be not to vote for this, but my decision's to vote for something like this and push to get something like this. That's the decision we face.
You know, if you, if you pass something like this, it doesn't mean, I mean, I've always been told resolutions, you know, they're not worth the paper they wrote on. They're just symbolic. Is that true?
Well, if you pass something like this, the commissioner court says, I want your businesses to be open 100%. And then your sheriff can go, well, I don't want your business to be open, or they can be open. Then it goes to the sheriff. Then it goes to your county attorney, your judges. And if somebody along that line says no, then let them stand and let them do what they need to do. But you as a governing body can do, you can do this. It doesn't mean anything. It's not like it's, how did you put it, just ceremonial? It's, it's a mechanism that says, okay, governor, we're going to be open 100%. If you don't think that's right, come on in.
And I'd like to add this to this. Last October, we passed a symbolic, I'll give you that, resolution declaring ourselves as a sanctuary city for Second Amendment. Now, what, what would that mean? How, how would we be tested on that? Well, here's a possible way it could be tested. The governor could pass an executive order and tell, to direct the sheriff of this county to go confiscate guns from everybody who has, I'm trying to come up with a, a record of, they, they had COVID, let's just say that. Now, we've already said, or let's just say he says to go get everybody that's got a Smith &amp; Wesson .38 Special, go confiscate all those guns. We've already, we've already passed a resolution up here saying that we're not going to stand for that. Now, does that have the effect of a law? No, not really. But it shows the people, and it, what I was hoping that our resolution on the Second Amendment showed our people that we're going to at least put up a fight. And that's all this, I mean, the first resolution that I brought to this court was, had strong language in it, for some, for some people. It had strong language because it's declared that the governor's orders are unconstitutional, which I, to this day, still believe, and time is going to prove me out. And, but I took all that out. And, and I know I got made fun of a little bit for going out to a town in California and stealing their resolution, which is, this is, came out of Atwater, Calif, yeah, Atwater, California. But it's very soft. It's just basically saying, we stand up for our businesses here. We stand up for our citizens here. That's pretty much what this resolution says, and I'll read the last four paragraphs. I'm not going to do all the wherefores and the wherefores, but let me read, let me read the language to you. Actually, I will read the last whereas. Whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court understands, respects, and has a duty to protect the United States Constitution and the Texas Constitution, therefore be it resolved that Hood County will, in accordance, in accordance with state and federal law, and in order to properly allocated, allocate limited local resources and optimize cooperation and communication to ensure public safety and due process for all, irrespective of business status, recognize each business as essential to our local economy, and be it further resolved that Hood County shall not, in accordance with state and federal law, take any direct action against any business or individual based solely on their actual or perceived, perceived business statute, uh, status. And be it further resolved that Hood County recognizes that state authorities and county authorities directly license, permit, and regulate certain businesses within the county, and nothing in this resolution is intended to abridge such authorities from overseeing applicable license regulations and restraints, if any, on such businesses, and be it further resolved that, subject to the foregoing, Hood County hereby declares that Hood County is a sanctuary county for all businesses and considers all businesses essential. Now, that's basically stating what the judge just said. He considers all businesses essential. Now, if the sheriff decides he's going to go enforce- go enforce one of the governor's orders, then he's, this isn't telling him not to go do that. If the county attorney decides to prosecute, if the sheriff goes and tries to enforce one of the governor's orders, we haven't told the county attorney to not do what he's, needs to do as a county attorney. All we're doing is declaring here that all businesses in this county are essential, which I believe, to this day, I, the, the government telling me what's essential and not is the most, one of the most asinine things I've ever seen in my life. It is unconstitutional from the get-go. Anyway, is there any--
I got one question for you, Dave. Is this resolution that you have, is this telling everybody can go open up defiant of what the governor's orders say?
Do you see that anywhere in--
I mean, I'm trying to read it. There's so much language in here. I'm just trying to understand it.
It doesn't tell anybody to do anything. We're just saying that we believe all businesses are essential.
I speak, yeah, down to your last paragraph. Here's, you know, we need to get through this, get it off the table and agree to something. But would it be reasonable to add one sentence to the last paragraph, after all businesses are essential, period, except Hood County recognizes state and federal law shall supersede any county resolutions? Would that, could we say that and still do the same thing with your resolution? That we're just not going to, we're not going to supersede federal or state? Our resolution won't supersede those things. And then we could go on and sign it. I would.
Commissioner Cotton, were you addressing me or--
Either one of you, both of you.
That's his-- His resolution.
I'll go to Dave first. Mr. Eagle--
So my, my comment to that is, in my opinion, you've just basically, we might as well just, I mean, I think it's a waste of time resolution. Because you basically, we've basically laid everything out and then said, "But really not." That's pretty much what that says. And it's, it is, I hope that there was enough fluff in there, and it's, there's some ambiguity in there, that we could at least show our citizens that we're trying. Now, there's nothing in here saying that, that we're superseding anything.
You got any comment about that, Mike?
Commissioners Court, you can say what you want in your resolution. As far as from the state side, you know, I've told you kind of where we stand, where I stand, where some other reps stand, and a couple of senators. But, you know, as I've seen this resolution without adding what you're, we're trying to add at the end, would it be binding at some point? Don't know. Will it be taken to court? I don't think so. Not an attorney. Anybody could probably take anything they want to court. But what the other counties have done, two in my district, and probably some more to follow, is they've taken a stand, and they've said exactly that. You know, "We want our businesses open." They've seen people failing in their community, and, you know, some counties are already operating at higher levels. Are you guys against that? I mean, it's just a matter of, you know, when it's time to do patriot stuff, are you going to step up? Do you want to step up? What do you, how do you feel about it? That's, that's your court to decide. I've decided myself, from pretty much the beginning, that as a state rep, I'll be standing up.
Yep. I've been out to a couple of restaurants over the week, last week. Stumpy's for one. They're jam-packed. They're full. I've tried to get to breakfast after church on Sunday, which our church was shut down to about half. Every other road blocked off. They're doing the right thing, you know, keeping people apart. You can't get into a restaurant to have breakfast. They're full. And they're not turning you down. It's just a wait list.
That's a good thing. That's what--
That's a good thing. That's why I say, so I think, I think the businesses have understood it. I think they're opening up. And I think the people that are brave enough to go out and intermingle with people they don't know, that might have COVID, are willing to take the chance. And it sounds like there's a lot of people doing that.
It's a personal responsibility, but I'm not taking a backseat.
So I don't think that the sheriff is out there arresting anybody, or the constables are arresting anybody for going into a restaurant and not staying six feet apart or less than 10 people at a table. I don't think we're doing that. So, wow. Why are we doing this thing? Just--
I always thought, you know, you know, the, you know, I hate it that the governor was picking winners and losers in this deal. You know, I don't know where the logic comes where certain businesses can stay open and where certain businesses can't. I know right now that everything seems to be moving just almost normal, other than, you know, when you go in, you see the spacing, but you see the activity out there in the, in the county. I mean, driving down the 377, you couldn't tell that there's anything different.
Dave, I get what you're trying to do, and I appreciate it. Appreciate Mike. I will sign this declaration, or whatever you're going to call it, resolution, if we omit third from the bottom paragraph out. I will sign it right now. Are you saying be it further resolved that Hood County shall not, in accordance to that one?
Yes.
Third from the bottom. So I'll amend my motion to accept this resolution minus the third paragraph from the bottom.
I'll second that.
Before we vote on this, we got, don't we have, people want to speak--
Yeah, Mr. Biggers wants to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot.
I think everybody needs to speak before we vote on--
Yeah, y'all speak while they're thinking.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Biggers, you were the first to sign up, so you--
Thank you, Judge. Court, I appreciate it. Been a long morning. I've got three points. I'll be quick, timely, I think. They're pretty important points. From what I'm hearing, my plea has not changed since the last time we were here. My plea was to, people had your backs when they put you in these chairs. Just get their backs, too. This is what we're saying. Mr. Scott can talk to this even more. Two of the, my favorite places to go to have announced last week they're closing. The Tastancy, the yogurt store downtown, they're not going to survive. They've said, "We're closing. We cannot do this."
Well, I didn't hear the story.
The Tastancy, the little yogurt store right there on the corner of Pearl and, and 51. Tasty C?
Where you buy my yogurt once in a while, Judge.
Yes, the ice cream shop, yeah. They've made the announcement. They can't make it. They can't do it. One of the thrift shops I go to on 51, they're done. They can't do it. And that's been my plea, because I was, I was a business person for 25 years. I had my own business. I couldn't have survived this. I'm semi-retired now. But you hear these things, and you see these things, and certainly Mr. Scott could probably talk to it, too, because he spoke to it at the city council when I was there about the July 4th thing. There are businesses that have sold. People have bought them. People are shuttering. This, it's really gotten bad out there from the business point of view. But the three points that, that I really want to talk about, when we left here the last time, they got your back, get their back now. That's what I'm saying. The judge spoke, you guys spoke about laws, dollars, those kinds of things. Whether, where a law's an order, and order's a law, the dollars, there's, I'm a layperson. I found out the same stuff that Mike Lang just told me. Few searches, few phone calls. We know that the judge and Jay, they have a plan. You worked this through. The dollars are there. They're, they're assigned for us. We just have to go to, do the due diligence of the reporting, and you guys are doing that, and we're getting money. It's obviously happening. But to think that the governor, as Mike said, is just sitting there saying, "Nope, not Hood. Nope, not Rockwell. Yep, this," that's not happening. Because there are states in this union, like California. Top third of that state's red. Bottom two-thirds is blue. They have a blue Democrat. Do you think that governor, Democratic governor, that governor cannot say, "That top county in, in California didn't support me. They don't get any money." They can't do that. There's safeguards built in for that. And you can find that stuff out. I'm a layperson. I found it out really, really easy. Okay, with the law and the order thing, Judge, two days after last month's meeting, I found it rather interesting. Our AG was on the radio in Dallas, and he addressed this. And we all, they were addressing the craziness of the judge up there, trying to take the orders further than what they are. Well, somebody questioned him and saying, "What if they don't go that far? What can they do?" He had a rather, rather interesting response. And they have podcasts, so I recorded it. I want to have it here and let you guys listen.
Don't use up your five minutes.
Say again?
Don't use up your five minutes on that.
Here in the state of Texas, the governor said, "Okay, here are the rules." But then you had these judges kind of create their, "Wait a minute now. You can't have it both ways, right?"
No, absolutely. And it's incredibly confusing for individuals and businesses who are trying to figure out, "How do we operate? You know, what are the real rules? You know, the governor tells us this. County judge tells us something more restrictive." And, you know, from churches to businesses to individuals, everybody's confused. So we were trying to clarify, "Hey, you hear the rules. Governor has the rules. Counties, you can follow them, but you can't add on to them."
And if these counties don't follow them, or I should say, add on to them, let's look at both sides of that. What if a county doesn't follow the governor's regulations? What happens if--
So if they're, if they're adding more restrictions, which is what is happening, not that they're doing less, not like most of these counties are opening up more, if they're doing more restrictive, we can go in and file a lawsuit and try to enjoin what they're doing. I think we'll likely be successful.
But what if there are counties who do less? Does the same apply? Could you go in and file a lawsuit against them as well?
It's a little more challenging, but certainly we could try. It's a little more challenging because it's hard to enjoin people working. It just becomes a little more challenging for us.
Okay. He went on to say that, why should they get in the way of people working? That's the AG, basically what our county attorney's trying to get him to answer. They, so they're not even wanting to get in the way. And now we have precedents of two other counties happening. So you have businesses closing because of this, and I'm pretty excited about the Fourth of July thing. Mike was there. Mike and I have talked a couple of different times. I have a, I have a pretty good social footwork, footprint that I have. And once this happened last Tuesday at the city council, I went out and I posted in five places, and I boosted in a few places. And as of last night, because our businesses need a stimulus shot in the arm, they, they need something to get them over the hump. And with you guys coming back and saying, "We've got your back. We want you guys to go full bore out here," as of last night, at nine o'clock at night--
Five minutes.
One of my posts, this is very important, one of my posts, 87,000 people have seen this thing. 16,000 people have committed to come. That's just one. There's another six or eight coming. People, people are coming. They need to spend money. This is going to be a stimulus boost for us, folks. We need to do it. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Granik, you're next.
I feel like I need to just send it over to him every time first, so he can run it by him first.
Yes. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. My position is well-known. The number of cases in the county is up 10%, but due to the measured response, I'm thrilled that businesses have been opening. I was able to get a haircut, so I can hear things now a little better. I think the winds have been blowing in just the right direction with the Commissioner's Court. I just heard, I believe, is San Antonio mayor commenting yesterday on the news that he believed that some of our state officials are making comments, and I think that may have referenced to what we just heard, more for political points than for the good of the welfare. I hope that that's not true of our state officials or of any county officials. But I think that y'all have been doing a great job. I'll defer to the Supreme Court will decide the constitutionality of things rather than any individuals. I hope y'all continue to open things gradually and protect the interests of the total population. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Granik. This is Robin Hayes.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I made some notes. I'm Robin Hayes. I'm the county Republican Chair for Eastland County. And I just, I really, there's a lot of counties around ours that I just feel close in my heart to because I work a lot with people. So I feel that way about Hood County. And I spend money here. And so, so about the protesters that were here, that were from out of town, and, you know, they were allowed to come from out of town. If I heard right, I think the parade that's coming, you're trying to keep it more local. But then I noticed that, you know, how many, I'm wondering how many of the protesters were from out of town or even out of state, or they might have been right here. But, you know, that was a risk that y'all took. And I'm guessing if Commissioner Eagles' numbers are correct, that y'all's numbers are fairly low for COVID infections and deaths, like many around. And I am in agreement that I believe that what I've learned during this COVID process is that I just, you know, I've thanked God more for something else. I realize I've lived through a pandemic every year of my life, and I never knew that. I just, because of flu deaths, and because of abortions, murders, you know, I'm just like, "Oh, my gosh. So there's a pandemic going on year-round all my life." And I'm thinking that there's many more things that scare me than the deaths from COVID. I just think that I have been more scared in flu season than I have in this, because I've seen more deaths, and actually more severe sickness. And I know some people that have died from this. But I do know that if we shut down our economy, which this, in my opinion, was not a pandemic, it was a governor-enforced economic pandemic or economic disaster. It didn't have to happen, and it can stop right now. I think I heard earlier that, what was that? Some people were brave enough to stand. What was that, the people brave? I think you said something about people, the businesses that were brave enough to, they've already opened up. They're brave. I think they want y'all to stand with them and be brave. I think they, they would love to reelect y'all for that one reason. I've noticed the seating in the courtroom. It, it is a common sense thing to me, looking at the numbers and all. I'm like, "Okay, so we have to skip rows in between." But yet, we're sitting, I was judging, like, from the people that would have been sitting right in front of me to the people right, it's about the same. So to me, it's silly that, you know, every row should be able to be sat in, because we're not even actually side to side. I'm probably going to breathe or sneeze or whatever on them more than I would the ones that are behind me or in front of me. Just little things like that, I'm noticing that are very common sense. I think it is sad and embarrassing that a city in California passed a resolution. And it is, what's sad and embarrassing to me is that Texas, we're strong, and we're the leaders of this world, right? I wonder. I feel like all 254 counties in our state should have already passed a resolution. And that's all I have. Just wanted to thank the court again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hayes. Okay, I think that's all we have. I want to point out one thing, is that on religion here versus businesses, the very first week that this happened, I got calls from different ministers around, and I spoke to my minister, the Randy Addison, Rusty Addison, the minister down at the Cowboy Church in Lepan, Texas, and told him how we could do this the very first time so that nobody could, everybody-- could go to church. And that's when we had the deal to have the parking lot. And the very first week, nobody knew really what this COVID virus was going to do. We were a lot more cautious, everybody was, the first two weeks, the first month. And Ms. Hayes, I totally agree with what you're saying here. Everybody is aware of this virus now. Everybody has read different conflicting stories, different studies, what's happened in Sweden, what's happened versus Denmark, Norway. Everybody has enough to do. Everybody's educated enough now that if you don't want to go to a business, you don't have to go. If you don't want to go to Fourth of July parade, you don't have to go. But the very first week of this, I got with my minister and several other ministers, Larry Dixon, for example, a bunch of them I talked to, I said, look, please just go to social media, go on Facebook. Do something so that your members of your congregation can receive the word of the Lord and can pray together. Have the parking lot. And I'll say this about Pastor Dixon. He said, I just don't have that capability to do the parking lot because my parking lot's not like that. And I said, well, what about social media? He said, Judge, I'm really not a, a media type of person. I said, well, somebody in your church is. Please do the Facebook. So he reluctantly said, well, I'll try to do that. And I said, I don't want you to, to not be able to preach, praying the word of the Lord to your, members of your congregation. He called me up on Tuesday, the following week, and said that normally I'll have 60 members or so in my church. And he said, I really didn't like it when you told me to use Facebook. But I got 500 responses of people that listened to my Facebook services. And I want you to know, Judge, is that I will be using Facebook from now on in conjunction with my in-personal services, which he's now started. So the same way with my church, the Triple Cross Cowboy Church out here, they are now reaching people all over because of using social media. We have baptized so many people from Firework as Fort Worth, Ben Brook, and other people that we would have never been able to receive, or they would have never heard our word, had we just kept in our congregation. It may be God's plan that he wanted us to get out and use other systems, other media to reach other people. So we are now reading so many more people in our church that we now have two services, but we are still using our Facebook service. In fact, we've now added a Wednesday Facebook service along with our service because we are reaching so many more people. So I want, the difference between me and other businesses, I guess maybe it's selling something, and I never try to sell the word of the Lord, but from the very day one, I've worked with the ministers in our county to make sure that they could keep their churches open and serviced to their members. So, and I think I speak for all the commissioners up here, all of them, that we wanted certain things like that to go. Now, after we know so much more about this COVID virus is here, I'm like you, that yogurt place you're talking about, Mr. Biggers, you can ask that lady there, I probably ate their forays a week for lunch. And I hate it because of the fact that it's a cafeteria type of deal rather than an ordering type of place. I don't know what effect that has that. I didn't see anything about that. But I'm, with these two paragraphs being out of that resolution there and on the deal, I think that I'm going to be able to approve this too. I'm going to listen to see what Jay Webster has to say here. But I want everybody to understand that there's been certain things, and I, along with everybody else. And I'm going to say one more thing. The, the Texas Supreme Court dealing with that lady that had the salon, the owner of the salon, in the body of that opinion, they had the way that somebody, if I'd have had a business back there that I thought was essential, the way to have started all this thing, Mike, and you think you'll agree with me, is that owner of a business could have filed a petition in district court. Here in Hood County, it had to have been filed here in our one and only district court, Judge Walton's district court, and ask him for a ruling of whether 418 was constitutional or not. And he would have made his decision. And from there, they would have probably tried to get a writ of mandamus to go up to the Supreme Court. That's why the Supreme Court denied the lady's initial deal, is because they said that they had no jurisdiction because of the way in which it was started. It has to begin with the petition to the district court. And I agree that there's going to be, you're going to be shaking your head, yes, that's what it should have been. If I'd have had a business the second week after I'd found out how dangerous COVID was or not, I'd have probably challenged it and filed a petition here in district court. Normally would go up to the Court of Appeals, but in that sort of deal, they could have filed a writ of mandamus to the Supreme Court, and maybe they would have done it. But I want everybody to understand that there were certain things about this county that we never interrupted, and that was our freedom of religion. That never was erupted here in Hood County. I hope it wasn't in Eastland County either. And I can, I see Pastor Jerry Matson here, and I know that he was one that had services in the parking lot of his church too, and continued to minister to his congregation. I think I'm right about that. Am I right?
We're, we're 100% right on that.
100% right on that. Okay. Go ahead. I recognize you, Mr. Webster.
So the auditor asked me to come up here and speak real quick. I'll just kind of give you a quick update. We have six new cases, three as of this morning, that happened in the last three days. We're at 38. Some of those are doubles, so we're going to have six active cases that currently been monitoring. Outside of that, we're currently 75% of all of our businesses and conversations that me and you have had, by the time we get to the middle of Mar, of middle of July, as I was talking to Mike Scott, probably going to be at 100% based on the next round of orders that are going to come out. With all of that being said, the Treasury Act money is from the Treasury Department. Now, it's being delved out to us by TDM. There are auditing processes in place that I have to follow with some guidelines. Yeah, the governor's not going to do anything about it, but there is going to be an auditing process. I have to spend 75% of that money with her on public safety and public health, which means we have to have things in place that we're following public health and public safety acts. So I just want to advise you, and it's your call, I'm just here to advise you based on the conversation I've had with these three ladies, some of y'all, some of the information I've passed out, that, yeah, I may be able to spend all of this $500,000 and tap into an additional $2 million. But based on whatever we do going forward, it is highly possible. You put a stop to that today, and we're no longer involved in a public health COVID-19 response within the guidelines that have been set out. And it may affect that auditing process in which I'm allowed to continue to tap in or use the money to help the county out. So I just want you to be aware of that. There is an auditing process. This is not FEMA money. This is not state money. This is treasury money. It has a different set of rules. And I can tell you from past experience, and so can Becky, and so can the sheriff, that when money's not spent correctly and things are in place, FEMA has taken that money away and allowed you to use it. So I just want you to be careful. I will do whatever I'm told to do, but I just want us to be careful so we don't lose out on things that we've been trying to make and put in place to help out the county from a financial standpoint.
So if we don't, if we declare that we don't have an emergency anymore, and we don't have any COVID, there is a chance we might get the money shut down because you can't pass the audit?
That's correct.
Okay.
This resolution, I was not declaring. You're just saying businesses are essential.
And they can open 100%. So therefore, you don't have an emergency?
What did it say, 100%?
I don't know. What does it say?
So let me... Jay, your problem is like I addressed initially. Everybody understands common sense, what's essential. And I said at the beginning, every person that has a business in Hood County is essential to me. I don't care if you mow yards for a living, or if you're a neurosurgeon at the hospital. You are essential in what you do. I want everybody to understand that. But the way the governor has chosen those two words about essential or non-essential, and based the openings on certain places, has, are, are massage parlors and tattoo places, are they, are they now open? Is everything open?
Under the governor's orders, they're open, and ours will be open at 75% based on...
Yeah, so every business is open now?
Correct. And come June, July, you'll have Major League Baseball, if they can figure out what they're going to do, that are allowed to do some things, a lot of our...
Yeah, but we don't have a professional baseball team.
Right. But a lot of our team sports, Little League and all that, they got to start practicing, those, those with guidelines. You know, all the little phone calls I take every day, everybody in this community is trying to do the right thing in accordance with whatever the rule is, and we try to give them the best advice to do that. And everybody is within the 75%. And like I said, by the time we get to the middle of next month, we're probably going to be all at 100% based on everything that I'm seeing and reading.
See, this is what I'm saying about the deal here. The, you know, these words about essential versus non-essential, you know, who can argue that every business is essential? But the way the governor, or way that the Treasury, the way we get the money, the other $2 million that we're entitled to, it's almost at this point, we're so far in that every business is, is, is open right now, right? Every business, I'm not talking about Little League, every business is open in Hood County. And from every time that I've seen and been, I've had the same experience that you have, I go into places, I had to wait myself 30 minutes the other day to go into the Cotton Patch, for example, that they're full, they're doing as much business as they can. And I'm real happy about that. I sure don't want to do something at this late stage of the game that would jeopardize the other $2 million that we have come in, that's already been decided at the rate of $55 per capita, like Representative Blanks said. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
You see what I'm talking about? It's a little hard when you look at, at everything that you're going to do here. I know that we have money that we want to try to, to give out to businesses to help them. There's no question that everybody got hurt when this thing was closed. And we may have enough money that we can try to make them whole. Am I right about that? Jay, I mean, do you?
Yeah. It's one, so with what I've shared with you three and the auditor, you two are on my list to come. I was going to try to get with you today and try to meet with each of y'all, is according to look at a plan of what we can do for the community. Yes, one of the things that we are looking at doing for the community is a grant that they don't have to pay back, that will help them with whatever specific cost that they lost, utility bills and stuff during the business while they were closed.
What about employee salaries? Are there profits too?
So if they're a, so let's take a salon, for example. Salon owner has 15 people in that business. The salon owner can apply for the grant, and so can each one of the individuals in that salon that had, that paid rent for the salon space or barber shop.
I got, I'd like to make a comment here. First of all, I shudder when I hear somebody working for the government saying they're going to make a plan for me. That really bothers me. For, for people out here and that have, that are private businesses, the more the government plans for me, the less plans I can do for myself. Now, this is bringing up an interesting situation to me that I, that I've never commented on, but now the door's open, I'm going to comment on it. We are policymakers up here, to some extent in this county. We have a health director, Dr. David Blocker, who comes up here and gives us advice from a medical standpoint. Here's, here's what's going on from a medical standpoint. Here's how many cases we've got. Here's how many people have been tested. All this, these, this data that's going down to the Department of State Health Services, that comes back, and he reports on that. That's one piece of information that we've got to utilize to make decisions. And then Jay Webster comes up and gives us perspective from emergency management. Now, I don't want, I would like to understand and see some sort of statutory or regulatory or policy authority that you've got that says this resolution, that says nothing about, nothing about anything besides that we're declaring business is essential, that we're not, still under the governor's disaster order. There's nothing in here about that. Now, maybe by implication, you could argue, possibly. But we still also have policy considerations to make about the citizens of this county. And we have to put up, take, we're the ones that are stuck with the idea that we've got to make a decision that, for the county, based on all the information that we've been provided. It, you know, we can't just listen to one opinion. And I think that's one of the governor's problems right now, is he's listening to Hellerstedt, and he's not listening to anybody else. So again, what we're, basically what I'm hearing is that we're, the main stickler here, apparently, is that we're afraid we're going to lose money if we go along with this order. And I want, I want everybody to sit here and think about that for a minute, that we could potentially lose money because we don't do what they tell us to do. I'm, I'm having some big, I'm having a huge philosophical, legal, moral, many issues with that idea that we're going to basically just sell out because we're worried about potentially losing. Where would that $1 million go? That $2 million bucks, where would it go if we got it? Or when we get it? Where does it go?
75% of it will go to help, you could pay my salary up through October. You could pay for all of the supplies that we've furnished to every nursing home, assisted living facility, all the supplies and costs of any of the stuff that we've provided to every employee through the last four months, and including up until December on any preparation that we do to continue to fight COVID-19 with the public health and public safety measures within those guidelines. All of the barriers that we're installing in every building can be paid for. Stuff that we've looked at that we could utilize to have at our disposal for medical response going forward can be paid for. We can assist the community with up to $3,000 per individual grant. I could go on and on.
So let me make sure I get this then. We've spent resources to beef up like PPE, stuff like that, and your salary and maybe other salaries, we're spending, we're, we're keeping tabs of that, right?
Yes, sir.
And we've gotten back so far, 500 and something thousand. Does that cover so far what has been done?
Yes.
So we're, that 500 grand covers what we've expended as a county so far?
So far.
Pretty much. So what, let me make sure I'm getting to the bottom of this. So this $2 million that we're worried about getting is for what we may spend in the future to keep messing with COVID-19? Is that what this is about?
So in order to tap into the other $2 million, I have to provide documentation along with the auditor as to how we spent the first 500, which is what we now have to do that is in the bank. So if we don't meet and pass the audit inspection for the first 500,000, we won't get the additional $2 million.
So that, what would that, okay. So if we don't do what they, if, if we pass this resolution, you're, you're of the belief that this resolution would negate all that?
My belief is irrelevant. I'm just passing along advice, Commissioner, as to, we just need to be careful what we do, and that's all my advice is. Based on my past experiences of what I have seen with the FEMA side of things, when you don't have the things in place and the correct language in place, they could look at it and go, well, your emergency ended on this day, therefore there, in fact, anything you spent after that day is no longer recoverable.
But that's with a, that's with an emergency declared, like a tornado, a flood, or something like that, where there's a, where there's a tangible thing that's happened, and that you're working to remediate that. And at some point, there's an act that's happens where that emergency situation no longer exists?
According to the experts, there is still an active emergency going on with the continual rise that we've seen over the last two and a half weeks of COVID cases throughout the state of Texas. So there is... state of Texas. So there is.
Well, yeah, well, that's, that's gonna, I mean, they're testing many, many more people. You're going to get more cases. I mean, that's.
But I'm answering your question. In there, under the governor and the President of the United States, there is an active emergency still going on. And that's why the orders are in place until December to continue to try to keep the curve flat like we have in order to not have another spike to overwhelm our healthcare system and other things that fell behind because we weren't prepared.
That, that ship sailed two months ago. You got anything else? State Representative Mike Lang, you want to add?
About the fund?
Yes.
Since you're talking about the funds now, the President of the United States put out the disaster order for all 50 states, which then the governor had his own disaster order for the states, emergency declarations. That's where the treasury money comes in. It's not the governor, it's, it's the federal government. It's all our tax money, which is right. So to say that you're going to do this resolution and not get any money is ridiculous. And if you think I'm wrong, call Chief Nim Kidd, and I think you probably have his number, I don't know where Jay went, and ask him. So for you to say this while you're under a disaster order from the president and the governor is totally wrong.
Look, Mike, it's not saying that. It's the, it's the use, it's the verbiage in here. I'm an attorney, and I've won a lot of cases and lost a lot of cases. The devil's in the detail. The difference is using the words essential and non-essential. There's not a person in this county that doesn't think that every business is essential. But the way the governor came out with his disaster proclamation and his subsequent orders about it, he used that to let Walmart and Kroger, who I shop at both of them, to let them stay open while the mom and pop stores had to close down. That's what hurt me so bad. When I look out of my office and I see these shops selling the same things that are being sold in old school that they couldn't sell, just because they had a bigger space or whatever. But what he's not saying, he's not saying that, you're saying it's ridiculous that he's not. No, he's saying that if we do this, that the way that Jay Webster and the Auditor are going to have to fill out the paperwork, that it may be the terminology of passing this. I hope it doesn't. I don't know if I want to risk $2 million that we could maybe get to help out our citizens to make them whole again. That's what we're trying to do here. I mean, I'm not a crusader. I'm a commit, I'm a county judge trying to follow the law to protect every citizen in Hood County and every piece of property in Hood County. That's what I want to do. I don't think you want to sign an indemnity to the, well, you will pledge you and Katie's money that in the event we don't get the $2 million that y'all will sell your home and try to indemnify Hood County if we lost any of this money.
I don't think we need the money at that point if you're going to bring me and Katie into this. This is something that the commissioner's court needs to decide on, and not me, I'm up here talking about the money. And as far as the money goes for FEMA, that's reimbursement money that you guys have done for COVID.
Well, it's not FEMA money, it's treasury money, isn't it, Jay?
As far as the per capita money, that's a different kind of money from treasury coming in. Where's Jay?
No, it's the same money.
And it's a federal money. Is it, is it state money?
No, the per capita money is treasury money.
Exactly, so.
We're not, we're not asking for any state money, we're not asking for any.
And that's the 200, $2 million coming in, correct?
Well, it's the 500,000, or 500,000 that I have to prove that I can order to get to the other.
Okay. And have you proved that yet?
No, we just got the money today.
Okay, but have you, I'm not trying to run your court, I'm up here for the money, so you guys make the decisions.
Well, I'm not for the money either. I'm not going to sell my liberty or anybody's liberty for money. That's not the way it is.
I'm not saying you are, I'm just answering your questions about him coming up here, but I'm, I'm not here to argue. I, I'm here to say that I stand, I stand behind this resolution. If you guys are scared about the money, you know, Jay Webster has information from Nim Kidd and the treasury and everybody else as far as receipts, reimbursements, expenditures, and what you need to do.
Well, I'll throw this into the mix. I got a motion on the table to accept, to pass this resolution minus the third paragraph from the bottom, or the second, be it further resolved, as an amended motion, and I've got a second from Commissioner Dever, that's on the table right now.
Second from me.
Uh, second, excuse me, second from Commissioner Wyatt.
Any further discussion?
Can I say something?
Yes.
This was just to clarify, to make sure that moving forward, we don't lose anything. I 100% understand where you're going, Davis, and you understand that I'm just trying to bring everything to light and be transparent so everybody knows something because I don't want, two courts from now, one court from now, maybe over a week, we should have waited and let it be 100% and not worry about this. And now, this money, this $2 million can help Hood County. That's the goal. These people have been hurt, their businesses have been closed, maybe somebody can open back up. I just don't want to lose that opportunity. Absolutely want everybody to understand that. Nothing against what you're trying to do, and I get what you're trying to do, I understand it 100%.
With all due respect, I don't see any program out there, and I haven't read about one, and I haven't seen one, where money coming back to the county has any way of going to individual business out here. The individual businesses can go straight to the SBA for disaster relief, they can go straight to the SBA for PP, Personnel Protection. I have seen nothing about a county being able to dish out money to a, to a private business.
That is what this can do.
That's what gets me. That's what I'm concerned about. Do I want to try to make somebody whole that's lost something here? Go ahead, Mike.
If I could respond to Commissioner Eagles' comment, one of the things that I want to talk to a county about, and I'm already talking to the city about, and a lot of counties have done this, actually, most of them as a result of our Small Business Resiliency Plan. But Parker County, for example, is, I believe it's Parker County, don't get me started lying here, but several counties have actually created a foundation, and, and they are taking that money, a portion of that money, and doing exactly what we did at the Chamber, which is, which is a small, a micro grant, which I believe is what Jay spoke about. And it's a great way to help the businesses. So, you know, it's, I mean, the money's out there, and I think we need to use it for that. So I just wanted to respond to that. Thank you.
Hey, Bob?
So the answer to your question is, the CARES Act funds allow us, the county, to pass money down too. So based on what I proposed to the judge in writing and kind of shared with Commissioner Dever in Cotton, it would allow us to pass through $200,000 at $3,000 apiece, which would give you 66 businesses or persons or individuals that you could help out.
You know, I, I mean, I agree with what this resolution says and stuff. Oh, my God.
This resolution here, and I told Dave, if he took the third, third paragraph out, and that's the only one I see, is the county government conflicting with the state government. The rest of it, I agree with, but I don't see how this could be a conflict with us getting any money from the state. I'm not a lawyer. We got two lawyers on the court, and they're both, you know, kind of split one way or the other. But the only, only paragraph I see in there that I asked to be deleted is the one that is conflicting with the state government.
Kind of does, Judge, doesn't it?
Yes.
The last paragraph conflicts with the state because we're declaring all businesses essential, and that is different than what the CDC has put out in conflict with the state, I think.
I disagree with the state on that. I believe all businesses are essential.
No, I, I know, no. We're not, we're not arguing that. We're arguing that the CDC has put out a list of essential and non-essential businesses. Until they change it.
It's the difference between what the common understanding is of the word essential and the, and the twist that the governor has put on between essential and non-essential businesses. Now, I'm worried that it could affect it, and it could affect getting the money.
We're saying with that last paragraph that they're wrong, that CDC can't tell us that some of the businesses are not essential.
I think they are wrong.
Well, I don't care what you do. If you're a horseshoer, or you're a, are you, you're a brain surgeon or a heart surgeon here, you're essential.
I'm, you know what, I'm just glad that we can get together and talk about this. You know, I mean, I'm feeling good about this because at least we're talking about it. You know, think about this. We're out here having a decent debate about what we should be doing here. That's what American politics and American democracy and the republic is about. And I still got a motion on the table and a second.
You know, here's, here's what I see with the last, the last sentence or the last paragraph. It's saying, we are, our opinion is all businesses are essential.
That's our opinion about this.
That's their opinion.
I mean, that's all, but. But it's not saying we're against the county, the state government. That is the county's.
We're not calling the governor names, none of that.
I'm not no lawyer.
I said it a few weeks ago. I don't care what you did. Your, your business is essential if it feeds you or what have you. You know, and this is what that last paragraph's saying. I'm not saying to go against the governor, because the governor's orders still going to be, in fact, whether you sign this or not.
That sentence there says that you disagree with the governor, that all businesses are essential, and the governor's saying they're not.
That's your opinion.
I do disagree with the governor. And the, and the stunt that, and I'm going to say that, I've been holding this back, the stunt that the governor pulled, that, that hair salon over in Dallas, he, he stuck knives in our backs. He said he was going to stand up to that, and then he backed off and, and did his deal, which, which is great for the gal. But the governor turned on us. He turned his back on us and laid us out, you know, turned, throw us under the bus.
And I know we don't go by Robert's rules, but I'm going to try to call the question again.
Oh, I'm the judge, and I can only call the question. So you can keep on doing it, but I'm the county judge. I heard the other day that the county judge up here prevented Loop 567 from ever going through for 12 years because he owned the pasture out there, and they were taking too much of his pasture, and I don't know who it was I was talking to. I remember that. I think it was Commissioner Dever, and said, I didn't realize I was that powerful. Now, I don't intend to be a dictator or anything, and like I said here, y'all are sitting up here and doing stuff, and I've tried cases, is what I'm telling you here. And you've got to look at definitions. And I'm just really afraid because of the definition of what's come down in the governor's orders between essential and non-essential. That's what I'm afraid of. That could impact us using money that other states, it's our money. The money we got, that $2.5 million that's earmarked for Hood County, that's our tax money. And I want us to get back our tax money to help our citizens, to help the businesses that have suffered. Who would want to do that? But I'm not going to sit up here and say that another lawyer that's up here, and by the way, I brought you the Attorney General's opinion for Bressoria County that Ryan Vassar wrote, that said that all of the judge's orders are the, I mean, the governor's orders are lawful and constitutional. You remember that, Mike? I showed you that order, that Ryan Vassar, not the, not Abbott, but he was on, Ryan Vassar is the assistant AG that wrote all the other, and signed all the other orders along with Ken Paxton. I've read this, I've agonized over this. Man, I want, I don't want to argue about anybody about all businesses being essential, but do I want to risk not getting any money for Hood County? I don't know, Jay. I'm sitting here thinking that these radios about having something, it may be we could use some of that money. No, he's shaking his head about that. I'm always trying to stretch.
That's good thought, though.
Oh, yeah. I want to see if, I'm trying to see if we can use what all we can use to alleviate the tax burden here of everybody here. That's what I'm afraid of. We passed this, some lawyer down in Austin can maybe use this, because what happens to the money that if we don't get it? Does it go to Tedom?
Yes.
Now, that's real good, isn't it? We don't get our money, so it goes to the Texas Department of Emergency Management. That's who gets it instead of to Hood County Office of Emergency Management. I don't know.
I see, I see both points. Yeah, yeah, I see both points. I do. I see Dave's point, Commissioner Eagle, and I see Judge Massengill's point. I do.
Anybody else want to talk? You want to say something? Come on up.
Y'all don't know this, this is Pastor Jerry Maston from Eastland County, a good man.
I'm Jerry Maston. I pastor River of Life Church. I have a lot of things I'd like to say. I always feel a little bit uncomfortable times like this. I've never have been one to enjoy conflict. It's not conflict, confrontation. Yet, I've always been one that stood for what I believed was right. I began pastoring many years ago, and in 44 years of ministry, I've had times when I was challenged for what I believed and what I would say. And there's been many times that we lost contributions because I would not flinch from what I believed, and I took my convictions from what the Bible said. I know in the beginning of this, there were a lot of assumptions made. I think we were supposed to have 2.5 million deaths. But I learned a long time ago the definition of assumption. Assumption is the lowest form of knowledge, and that's what we based everything on. I'm also aware, because I've done international travel and conducted international ministry, in Italy, where I've conducted five international pastor leaders conferences. Italy was where they took the model from, and they were allowing illegals, illegal aliens to come in from the north. They were bringing the virus in. And so they allowed it, they flooded northern Italy with viruses. Italy is the nation that has the older, 55 and older, the largest per capita, the oldest population in any, in any nation, the oldest population of any nation. So with that, they had the elderly getting the virus. With that, they have government healthcare. And with that, they would not administer their medicine to those 55 years and older. So Italy had a high impact on death rates. We're also aware from hearing members of families that the doctors say that their family member died of COVID, and they declare their family member went in with this disease, which had been long-term, they died of this disease, but it was marked as COVID. I personally believe the numbers inflated anyway. We just recently had our two rest homes in Eastland County tested. We had 19 cases proved we had viruses. This was 10 days ago, 12 days ago. Snyder had 39. Only within two days later for it to be reversed and declared that it was false positives. Personally, I, I believe a lot of this is to manipulate people. Here's something else that I see. For many years, they've tried to divide us with races, black against white, white against Hispanic, men against women, youth against the elderly, divide the rich and the poor. And today, now, they are saying essential and non-essential. So with everything that was divided, now we're all of a sudden fragmented. Personally, I believe somebody needs to stand up and declare. I had a pastor, a good man, a pastor friend in our county, a man that I look up to, a man that, that I see as a, a man's man, you know, not intimidated. He could speak a lot easier than I can, and, and things like this. Yet, he came to me the other day, a week ago. He said, they told us we were non-essential, we had to close our churches. Now, what he did tell me a week ago, after all of these weeks, he said they, I felt essential, non-essential, I felt like I was not needed. And this is a man I look up to and I admire. He said, but Jerry, because you stand, he said, I realize I'm essential. And in churches, you know, the, do you remember 9/11? Right after 9/11, for two weeks, the churches were filled to capacity across the nation. Right after 9/11, for two weeks, the churches were filled to capacity across the nation. Well, we had, you know, we'll do 500, 800. We always do the media. And so, we'll have 600, 800, maybe 1,000 people view our messages. But the first two weeks, we had over 2,000. It really increased. It looked good, but the third week and fourth, it started going down. Another pastor friend of mine, who, our church, which is, we're an autonomous church, but we give and we help people. And over the last 12 years, we've given away at least $4 million out of our small church, helping other ministries and people. And we helped this one man start his church in Ranger. So, everything we do, there's no strings attached. And we helped him start his church, a man we really support. But he's afraid even to this past week to begin doing ministry. And he's been telling us, asking us for prayer because many of the folks in his relatively new church, less than three years old, have been men and women that came out of addictions. He said, they're all going back to it. And now, we opened, I chose to open 100%, but we're having people that aren't coming back to church. This has hurt our nation. And I think people need, they need encouragement. They need to see, and I respect you, Judge. I commend you every, I bring your name up all the time. I commend you highly. But we, I believe we've got to rise up as leaders, encourage people, as I think someone used the word patriot, and stand up for what we believe is right. And I don't, to say every business is essential, I don't know if I agree with that 100%. But to say every person that would work and make a living and provide for themselves or someone else, I would say every single person is essential. And I could probably talk 30 more minutes, but that's where my heart is. And I appreciate every one of you guys.
I'm gonna share something with you. Our pastor over in Tolbert, he's kind of adapted to this. First went on, he did the internet deal. And like Judge Massengill said, he had more followers on the internet than he did come to church. But after that kind of settled down, he started doing three services. One Saturday, one early Sunday morning, and then regular 11 o'clock, and kind of spread everything out for everybody was crowded. And it's worked well at Tolbert. So, just an idea. I appreciate your talking.
Well, thank you.
You know what? Pastor Maston here, I really have picked up on, I agree with you. You and I have talked many times, and I respect you greatly. The one thing that I've got, what you just said up here, and I agree with Dave about this, and Dave Eagle is my friend, and I've said that every time I've ever spoken.
Oh, yeah.
Like all these guys, I consider all these commissioners my friend, and everybody out there my friend. The one thing that you did say that I really hit on here, that really would resolve it for me that does accomplish this, I want everybody to feel good about themselves, to have confidence in themselves. We're all God's creatures. And I said that, and considers all persons in Hood County essential. When you said that, I agree with that 100%. And I didn't jeopardize anything. And I would say that every individual person in Hood County is essential. Boy, I agree with that 1,000%. That's what I would like to do. Dave, how about just changing that last paragraph and say that, be it further resolved, the survey for Hood County hereby declares Hood County is a sanctuary county for all business and considers every individual in Hood County an essential person? How about that?
I'll take it.
Huh?
I'll take it. So, we've got a Second Amendment on the, a Second Amendment motion, correct? All businesses, let's see. So, the last paragraph would read, be it further resolved that subject to the foregoing, Hood County hereby declares that Hood County is a sanctuary county for all businesses and considers all persons, did you say?
Yes. All individuals.
All individuals.
In the womb, or if you're 106?
All individuals essential. So, change out businesses with individuals.
With individuals.
With that modification, I'll put, my motion's on the table with that amendment.
You gonna re-say that again?
Are we gonna delete that bottom from third paragraph?
Yeah, that's still on the table, Commissioner.
Okay.
The third paragraph's gone, and then we're adding to the last?
The third paragraph from the bottom deleted. The last paragraph, individuals replacing businesses.
That's right.
Thank you. Not third, eh? All right. I think we've had enough discussion. I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Well, it's nice that we get along and vote all five.
Thank you very...